Good evening board members, students, and school board members. Ms. Chapetti, my name is Stephanie Jacinti, I'm the principal at Rayma Elementary School. Today, I have brought with me my building leadership team to present to you on things that we are currently engaged in at Rayma Elementary. We are in the process of holding students accountable for learning, but also having them involved in learning, in their own learning as well. With me, I have Ms. Nina Larson, who is our, my fourth grade teacher. And I also have Boyd Lewis, who is my one-two split teacher. To present to you first will be Ms. Larson.
Um, Ms. Jacinti asked me to present on some things that we learned when we went to the UVA retreat in January. When we went, um, Mr. Lewis, myself, and her, and our IC at the time, attended with us. We learned it, we learned how to implement the turnaround, um, program from UVA into our school. Previously, we had not been introduced to UVA, even though we were considered a UVA school in August. Um, we learned how to professionally implement the data-driven instruction, bring it back to our staff and inspire them in a professional way. Um, instruct, gather, and analyze data from assessments. And it was a real eye-opener, it was informative, because we had been doing a lot of things, but they were not what the UVA turnaround program was. So, we saw the things we were doing right, and we brought back information how to implement them correctly. Um, Rayma Elementary's turnaround, UVA turnaround program, it's all driven by the interim assessments. Um, our school uses the TLI program. And it's a hope that the kids will use these interim assessments created using PARC standards and real-life situations to help the kids be successful for real life. And that the TLI, which is to get the kids ready for PARC, is related to, um, the quality lessons that we should be giving in class. And they're all directed or driven by the TLI, the interim assessments, which is a big thing from the UVA turnaround program is interim assessments, interim assessments, interim assessments, to get the kids ready, so it's not just, oh, here's you a test that you've never seen before. We use the, like I said, the learning program, the TLI Learning Institute is what it's called. A lot of us just say, oh, TLI, but it's the Learning Institute. And it's administered three times a year, um, for grades one through five in math. Grades two through five, um, are given reading and language arts assessments at the end of quarters one, two, and three, or as close to the end of quarters as possible. And we have a data day where we come back and we look at them. And we again assess where the students did, how well they did, what we need to do to reteach. And that drives our RTI classes, which is the response to intervention, to catch the kids that, um, are falling behind before they're so far behind that we can't catch them up. It's also the kids that are on grade level, ready to go, and use enrichment for them. This is to ensure that we can get the kids prepared for real life, is basically what it is. And for the PARC, to get them used to testing, so that they're not, um, scared when they get to it the first time. These tests are done on the computer, so students can get instant feedback. It's not like they have to wait eight months with the PARC. So, they know what standards they did well on, what standards they did not. So, this is our TLI data that we have posted at our school. It's from quarters one, two, and three. Um, our hope is that we were making growth each time and getting better using the standards that were tested on TLI with our, having lessons driven from the standards that were to be tested. Most classes did well and improved each time. Some, it, the standards were different, so it's not like they were the same standards taught over and over. So, we definitely can look at this TLI and see, oh, these standards the kids didn't do as well on. We need to do some reteaching in them, and that's where our response to intervention groups come in. Um, the analysis and the action plans, when we came back from the UVA, we realized that we just were doing a lot of fluff stuff, not the real thing that UVA wants us to do. So, we changed the way we were doing our anal, our data analysis days and our action plans to look straight from TLI, pull them out. Teachers meet in grade levels, um, so that they can plan their data for the next night, or plan what they're gonna do for the next nine weeks with instructions, look at the data, who they need to reteach, and what kids they need to push and give enrichment to. Um, the teachers use the data, analyze it, and they, with the UVA program, you can, um, ask for help on how to deliver instruction, or go to the other teacher and say, I saw that you did really well on this item. Can you help me teach my students, give me some different ways to improve my instruction? Or, um, maybe put them in the, um, response to intervention team groups. And they come in also with the grade level groups and say, we're working really hard on these things. They've got those, we now need to work on this. And that's also on our lesson plans. Yes. Oh, RTI, that's response to intervention groups. And those are our kids that we see are not making, um, proficient level on the TLI. And that's one thing before we were not doing based on the TLI. When we came back from the UVA, it's something that we changed at our school to switch the groups up and to focus on the s, the standards that they weren't reaching. And that's what they should be teaching in the RTI classes, which is the response to intervention. Uh-huh. The first p, um, page, that's like the front page of our action plan. It's more like a calendar, we just put our standards on there that we're teaching each week. And so, we know everything that's going on, like screen break when the parks was took, when, um, we had the end-of-year tests, this was just the front page. And the other page is kind of what our lesson plans look like. We have the standard at the top, we break it down to kid-friendly language, like tear it apart. Um, unpacking the standard is what we like to call it. And then we put it, what we're gonna do each day, break the standard down to teach it each day. And then the, we have like the activities we're gonna do, all the resources we're gonna use. And then, um, at, on the next page, we have like our response to intervention groups, what each group should be going, doing. And we have an enrichment group, an on-level group, and another low-level group for the response to intervention. And we should all have our lesson plans by the door, so that if any of you ever come to our school, or anybody, even parents, they could say, hey, this is what my kid should be learning this day, and they're not. Um, this is part of the UVA program, so that everybody's on the same page. You can see what's going on, and it's transparency, so that you are teaching what you said you're gonna be teaching. And that it's tied, and all this is together, it's tied right to our TLI assessments. So, that we are not gonna hide anything, we're not tricking the kids. We're not saying, we're gonna teach how to divide fractions today, and really, you know, we never touch it. So, it's what the kids should be taught. These are scores from the DIBELS. I don't know if you've heard of them, this is only done in the kindergarten, first, and second grades. Um, these are given for phonemic awareness, they, letter naming, nonsense word decoding, fluency of reading passages. The green is the kids that are proficient, red is obviously the kids that are strategic, that need the help. This is also used to drive RTI for the younger grades. The upper grades do not do DIBELS. Um, the reading inventory test is what the upper grades do. It's a new test that we're piloting this year. Um, I do believe, Mr. Chapetti could correct me if I'm wrong, or Gerald, or, or Tim, that only the UVA schools are doing this, right? Okay, so only UVA schools are doing this, in three through five. And so, these were our scores from March that we took. We just took it again this past, um, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so we do not have our new scores. But I know for myself that I had all my kids improve. We still do have a lot of kids in the red, which is like DIBELS, they're, um, strategic, they're below level. Some of them are like extremely below level, but this is like a comprehension test. It does inferencing, it does, um, compare and contrast, things like that, that are harder skills for kids, they have to read a passage, and it'll ask them questions about, what were they doing in this passage, or just fill in the blank, which is context clues. So, we have a lot of work to do here. Um, guidance and support, this is something we also learned at the UVA, is that, um, our teachers, it's a new program, a lot of teachers need a lot of support. So, the guidance and support's given from members, from the principal, Stephanie Jacinti, during Friday planning meetings, she goes around to each of the grade levels and gives support. Um, other team members, Mr. Lewis and myself, are also available to give the support when needed. This is like if, like I said earlier, teachers, oh, I can see that you taught this really well. Can you come and show me how to do this? Um, Stephanie also assists teachers as needed in creating lesson plans and activities to help teachers have multiple ways to deliver quality instruction. She's always emailing us, um, things to help with lessons, to help the students, little hints that maybe the teachers didn't know, or if they had, they can build on it and make it better. Um, we like to promote academic success at our school. We have academic award assemblies to help out at the end of each quarter. Students on the A, AB, and B honor roll are given awards for the academic success. Um, students with perfect attendance during each quarter are also given awards. We have lots of attendance problems at our school, so this is something that has helped us get our kids less attendance problems. Um, here's our PARC scores. They are not real wonderful, better than we expected, but we still know that we need to have improvement, and this is one thing why we were put in the UVA turnaround program, to try to improve our scores. And we're hoping that we see that this next year when we get the scores returned. Whenever that will be, probably, I'm not sure. UVA can make a difference, but everybody has to be, um, willing to change and stick with it. And you can't just say, oh, it didn't work for me this first quarter, I'm not gonna touch it again. Um, it does take time, it's not gonna happen overnight, unfortunately. Um, I'm a believer, I've seen the kids, when I teach to the interim assessment, we teach the standard each week, we focus on the standard, we do the reteaching. Um, and we meet in our little groups, the kids have made advancement. And so, if we can just stick with it, that I think we can make it be successful. And as with any program, success takes time and a willingness to do better. It takes everybody's wanting to do better. That's the only thing that our school is kind of resistant about. Um, these are some things that we have in place. We have a quarterly action plan, we have our leadership team, data-driven instruction and analysis, standard-driven rigorous assessments, that's our TLI. Um, the teachers also can make their weekly CBMs from TLI, so that these kids can see the test a lot, so that they're not scared of it, as some kids have test anxiety. We have horizontal and vertical grade level meetings. Um, we have a behavior plan in place, we do cop mean good, where the kids are good. And then at the, every two to three weeks, they do a little sale, and they can go down and spend their points. Um, we do our student recognition, we recognize kids with birthdays and kids that do special things. Um, like I said earlier, we're trying to get our attendance improved. We do progress monitoring for our RTI groups, our intervention groups, and the DIBELS kids. Um, so, we hope to improve the delivery of our instruction, so that we can move forward and become one of those top, excelling schools. Thank you. Just the reading intervention? In the reading intervention, um, the whole school does it in the morning, from eight to eight forty-five. And the kids are broke between their grade levels. So, for like my grade, fourth grade, they're with me. I'm, I teach the low-level kids, and then there's another one that has medium, and then an advanced group. And in there, we work on, my group works on the TLI standards that they did not get. The medium-level group works on the kids that were kind of in the middle. And then the advanced group works on the kids that got the high scores, and they're ready to get enrichment. And we do reading passages, we do fluency, we do, um, sight word recognition. Um, and like I said, work on the standard, whatever standard you felt that was well. I'm not sure what Mr. Lewis does, and he has what the lower grade does.
...... Make the three, give you the three levels with expectations for the year. So, these are the people that are on the far right side. So, all schools are doing it, and it's not just RTI intervention, it's also the tier-one instruction. Holders, small group, and individual instruction while they're teaching. So, it's not just some, it's kind of the zones one and two. All five zones have RTI. Um, all, all schools have pretty much had RTI for the last eight, ten years. Um, but now, we're putting a focus to RTI. Instead of the kid didn't get it, who's gonna teach them, get them out of the room. Now, they're still our students, but we're doing the general curriculum here. But we have another channel where we're doing the assessment and organization. So, we're remediating and accommodating. Where in the past, we either accommodated or just remediated. So, if you're just remediating, then there, who's falling behind, that must be taught. And if you're just accommodating, you're never catching up on the holes. So, we're trying to do both to keep the kids consistent.
My philosophy as an educator, the greatest danger for most of us is not that our aim is too high and we miss it, but that it's too low and we reach it. And, you know, that's something that I constantly express to my students on a daily basis, that they can reach high goals, and they can be successful in anything they want to achieve. Um, I have eight, or twenty-one students in my class. Eighty-one percent of those students are Native American. And there's some of my students in activities. The one thing that, that UVA has taught me, as well as some of the other teachers at the school, is that you have to have high expectations, and you have to hold your students to those high expectations. Um, we start each week by planning. And part of that planning is having specific and targeted standards based on what TLI is, you know, saying that we're supposed to be teaching, and, and we put those into lesson plans. And, and like, like Mrs. Larson said, we break it, let, or the standard down, deconstruct it down into the finest form, so that we know exactly what the students are supposed to be learning. Uh, we use anchor charts. Those of you that aren't familiar with anchor charts, they're charts that show examples of what exactly the students are supposed to be learning, whether it's identifying characters in stories, um, setting and plot, you know, different things like that. So, the kids have something visual to refer back to as they're completing their assignments. Um, quality assignments, highly rigorous quality assignments is key. We want students to be doing work that's meaningful, not just something that, that has no meaning and they won't benefit from. And then again, meaningful assessments. The assessments that are given on Fridays have to be tied to the standard you're being, that the students are being taught. And they have to address that standard in a rigorous way, so that the students can show mastery of the standard being taught. This is an example of some of the daily work that we do in class. Um, this is a second-grade student's work. One thing that I've really focused on this year with comprehension is when a student, before we ever start answering the questions, the students are supposed to read the passage, read the questions, and then they go back to the passage. And where you can see highlighted, they've highlighted information that supports their answer, or what I call evidence to support the answer. And one thing I've also tried to teach my students to do is not just find the evidence that supports the answers, but also by the highlighted or underlined evidence, write the number of the question that that supports. And so, you can see that this student highlighted and put a number beside the highlighted information, so that when it's time to go back and answer those questions, everything's right there for them. Um, assessment, again, like I said, it's, it's aligned to the weekly standard that's being taught. Um, at times, this, the assessments are created by the teacher. But most of the time in my class, I've used the TLI test builder. And you can go onto the TLI website, and you can find whatever standard it, it is that you're teaching that week. And you can pick, handpick questions that fit the rigor that you want the kids to be able to demonstrate. Um, the, the standards and the, uh, assessment are all tied to your lesson plans that you created that week. They're usually between five to eight questions. Um, what we like to see is part A and part B questions, kind of like what they'll see on the PARC assessment as they get older. And then there'll be open-ended questions where the students have to write a response to an answer. Um, and then you review and you reteach based on what your evidence, or your data shows you at the end of that week. This is some of the data from TLI assessments that the, the first and second grade took this year. On the top left-hand corner is data for the first grade math. All that, all first grade does is TLI math. So, you can see module one, the split class is a little behind what the district average was. Model two, a little better than the district average, and model three improved a little bit more. Um, and then second grade math in the top right-hand corner. Again, the yellow is our split class, and the blue is the district. And then down at the bottom is the TLI data for reading and language arts. So, they had a lot of success this year.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Um, I just wanted, as I said, look at the blues a little bit. I'm glad to see the yellows go up, but the blues aren't changing much. So, that's either attributable to the method you're using, or the teachers individually. But I just like, especially the second set of blues didn't, basically didn't move. So, I guess, I mean, there's two kinds of information there for us to reflect on, and I just wanna think about that a little bit while I'm seeing.
And then these are just a few thoughts that I wanted to, to end with. Um, the top quote is by Robert Mehan. Every student has a different learning style and pace. Each child is unique, not only capable of learning, but also capable of succeeding. And I think that's, that's key to educating any kid, is getting them to believe that they can be successful and building that foundation, building that confidence in them, so that they do feel like they can succeed and achieve high goals. And then the last quote says, "No student ever attains very imminent success by simply doing what is required of him. It is the amount of excellence of what is over and above the required that determines the greatness of ultimate distinction." Again, like I said, I, I understand I'm teaching first and second graders, but I, I also believe that that's the prime age for them to grasp new concepts and soak knowledge up. And so, that, that's what we do every single day, we try to achieve goals above and beyond what we're supposed to achieve. And, you know, I, I wanna, I wanna thank the whole school for, for, you know, it's not just my successes, it's the successes of our kindergarten teachers previously, the successes of the previous first-grade teacher of second graders I'm teaching this year. And I think that along with the support of the UVA system and a solid foundation that we built this year, we're headed in the right direction.
Um, may I ask, both of you teachers, uh, this is, I'm on thin ice a little bit here. I was instructional coach for a year here to visit, uh, Rayma Elementary. And I was, I've said this before in meetings, I wasn't a great instructional coach. I saw some coaches that I admired that, and who were more skilled than I am at that role. But I have to say that these two teachers I, I remember as exceptional teachers already. Uh, this gentleman, Mr. Lewis, he, you posted your standards before UVA. I remember how well organized you were, and I believe your class had some, um, exceptional performance in terms of growth and so on, too. So, um, I'm wondering, you know, sometimes a, a good teacher, a good administrator can make something work out of any model, where somebody else might just blow it up. And so, I'm glad you're doing well, but I'm wanting to hear from you a little more closely. What's the main thing you think that's different for you than, two questions, than what you did before? Because I think you were doing well before. And, and secondly, is there a difference in this model to you, you referred to a little bit, between how much it helps the high students versus the middle versus the low? Is there any particular distinction there, maybe there is, maybe there isn't?
If you go first, you go first.
Well, I think, I think the biggest change between what we were doing previously, previously in the UVA model for me, is how well we go into the standard and how, how much we break the standard down. Before, we probably didn't spend as much time, um, unpacking the standard and finding every little bit of information that the students are supposed to learn. Um, and I thi, I think that's probably what's the most important for some of our lower students, is we're finding gaps that, by breaking the standard down, you can find those gap areas that the students have previously missed, and you're able to fill those gaps in.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Harum. But you, he's correct, I agree, we break the standards down, we go more in-depth to the standard, where before, we might have just been hitting the top, assuming, oh, like, if, in my class, if the kids are supposed to learn multiplication, and they didn't get it, but we're doing multiplication of fractions, and I assume they know it. But once we break it down, and we see, oh, they don't have this multiplication skill, then we can go back in the RTI, like he was saying, the tier one, two, and three. It's all RTI is, is the tiers one, two, and three, and you can go back and tie it in. But that's really the main difference, is that really breaking that standard apart, hitting it hard, every little piece, not just skimming over the top, saying, oh, well, they got it. So, that's the main difference for me.
I have a question.
You have a question? Um, who is the shepherd?
Gerald, Gerald.
Gerald, I have a question for you, sir. We, we heard from the teachers about the successes of what they've been doing with this, um, program. But what do you think are the struggles? What do you think, um, of course, there's always has to be some difficulty or something that's lacking, that needs some accommodation or improvement? What are the struggles that you've been hearing from the principals or the teachers that are implementing this program, sir?
Are you talking about all, like, my six schools, not just Rayma Elementary?
Um, we can start with Rayma.
So, I think just the challenge for Rayma is when it comes to RTI, when you only have, Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong with any of this, but we have one grade-level teacher, for one teacher of the fourth grade, it's hard to do a RTI model when you only have two or three fourth-grade teachers. And so, that's one of the bigger challenges for a small school to, um, tackle. And then at the other schools that are, most of my schools are smaller in size, so they face that challenge. Um, and it's not that they don't have enough teachers, they just have, you know, a hundred and fifty kids. Um, and then two of my schools are bigger, and once again, they're just making sure, they struggle with, um, just making sure they have the right kids, getting the right support in those RTI classes. And I think that's the hardest thing to do in the first year, is getting a really solid RTI model. Um, most of the schools have done that, but the goal for next year is to make it really solid and hit the ground running with that, rather than putting it together as you go throughout that first year. If that makes any sense. Cause you're kind of building it as you go, year one, and then year two, you hopefully, it's really embedded, so you can really reach more of those lower-level students and the middle-of-the-road students.
So, um, so what is your solution for the smaller schools?
Well, I think you'd have to, um, um, a lot of the schools bring in EAs to help with that piece. They might bring in their, um, PE coaches to be a part of it. Um, they make sure that they use all staff that can be used to break those down into small schools, you'd agree with that, Stephanie, that that's what takes place. So, they just have to use what they have resource-wise. Because the other nice thing is that our smaller schools, their student-teacher ratio is probably the best in the district. They have very small class sizes, whereas in our larger schools, you might have twenty-five to one teacher. Smaller schools might have fifteen, sixteen kids to one. Like Boyd has twenty-one, it's a split, it's pretty small classrooms. So, I use just all available people that could possibly help.
Hey, Mr. Harum, you said, um, they can also do skill-based grouping. Instead of just looking at the grade, you're in first grade, I'm in the RTI in first grade. No, we look at the skill, and all the students who are struggling in fluency. No, we look at the skill, and all the students who are struggling in fluency or decoding, and we can bring them all in. Doesn't matter if they're kindergarten, first, second grade, they're all learning the same skill. So if we're reinforcing that skill, putting the kids together with the teacher that's teaching that skill, where, as we said, the students who are already scoring proficient tests, they're getting enrichment, so there's no reason we can't enrich them multiple grades at the same time.
Right, that brings to mind, at Twin Lakes, I think Sandro uses almost everything of the personal available to help with those small groupings.
Are you guys offering, um, sorry, are you guys offering, um, after-school program or summer school this year?
We do not have after-school program, but we are part of the K three plus program. Um, currently, I have budgeted for forty-five students to attend K three plus. Our current enrollment is at sixty-seven students. So we're getting kids in to our school to making sure that learning continues. Uh, in the past with K three plus, the numbers have been very low. I've also been a K three plus teacher. One of the benefits of K three plus is that these students stay with the teachers they start out with, with the twenty-five day head start. And the successes that I've seen as a coordinator, but also as a teacher, um, have been very positive. So when we went to structure the program this year, we looked at the teachers who were willing to give up twenty-five days of their summer, placed them in the program, but also made the commitment with the parents that if your child enrolls in this, they will stick with this teacher throughout the school year. And that's where we're gonna see a lot of, um, positive gains with student learning. So, the last couple of slides, why is change needed? Don't dwell on what went wrong, instead focus on what to do next. Spend your energies on moving forward toward finding the answer. And that is currently what our school is engaged in. At the fall, the fall of this year, um, I took over Rema Elementary about mid-September. Um, at that point, I was given the park scores. Out of nineteen schools, with our third grade class, Rema was fourth to the last when it came to park reading. If we look at third grade math, we were a little bit better. We weren't, not necessarily at the bottom, but we were kind of in the middle. If we go on to fourth grade, we were second from the bottom in reading. And that's very troubling for me, because that tells me our students aren't learning, they're not proficient. When we look at math, again, for fourth grade, we are about the middle, which tells me, you know, thus far, we have really strong math skills. They're not proficient, but they're almost there. Fifth grade, out of nineteen schools, Rema Elementary is third last. That is very concerning to me because, because it tells me we have sent fifth graders on to sixth, sixth grade not reading at grade level or writing. The same holds true for math. Rema Elementary is nineteenth on the list. We're, we're sending students who are not proficient, who are not able to do sixth grade work. And so that is why the need for change has to happen. I think some of the struggles our school has encountered is at the accountability piece. We do have resistors at our school, like any other school does. But when we start making the education about ourselves as adults, we lose focus on who education should be a part of. And this is where we need to start being advocates for our children. We need to start holding those high expectations for all children. Um, a lot of our students are native children that commute from Rema, Pine Hill, um, from the Zuni area. So a lot of our, our students are ELL learners. And when we talk about ELL learners, we talk about the specific ways that they learn. They're very unique in the way they learn. And so when I've gone to recruiting trips or I've started interviewing teachers for our school, my first question to them is, how do you learn? Because I think if you understand how you learn as a teacher, you will be more effective. And I say that because our ELL learners need hands-on projects. They need to have the ability to drive instruction themselves. They need to have the ability to question and seek answers for themselves. So when I'm, I was recruiting, um, this spring, those were some of the conversations I had with prospective teachers who I wanted to hire for our school because of the population we serve. All students can learn, but how are we gonna get there? How are we going to challenge them to go above and beyond so that we don't see the scores that we have presented to you today? Um, some of the benefits that we, we've seen are, we do have staff who are involved, who are engaged, and those teachers I rely on to help me lead the school in the right direction. Um, we still do have teachers who are resistant, who, um, were trying to get away from passing the buck. If a student isn't proficient, then what are we gonna do to help that student? And so that, that's where this last quote comes in. My teacher is my compass. I do not need even that. They are our guide. They are there to instruct us and lead the way so that our students become independent learners that they need to be.
Cynthia, I have one more question. Um, Rem, you talked about, um, the, the change that you wanted for your, for your, um, school. So how are you implementing, um, your, with your parents with that, with parental involvement? How are you getting your parents to get on the, the bus, with the same way the kids are getting, and reinforcing what the teachers and what your school or the administration is doing with, um, continuing the change at home also?
I think my biggest struggle this year, um, is parent involvement, because there are parents who consistently check out their students to go to Gallup, and the importance of education lacks. And so again, it's getting the parents involved, calling them up on the phone, where's your child? We need them here. We've started utilizing our homeschool liaison to go get the kids, to bring them to school, but also having those hard conversations of why education is important. And this means looking at the individual student and showing them, well, this is where your student is, and this is where they, we need them to go. With only a couple of days left, we've seen a large number of students not coming to school. Um, we have seven days of school left, but instruction is still happening. So again, it's involving teachers involved, making sure that communication is happening. And if it doesn't go further than that, then they bring it to my attention, and I'm on the phone with the parents, um, asking them what they need, how can we support them, and what do we need to do to get your students in school?
Right, right before you jump in there, um, I'd really like to thank Ms. Larson and Mr. Lewis for, for their presentation. They, they showed that they're using high-yield strategies, like the highlighting text, um, other items, talking about the RTI. There, there are two people who are buying into the system, and as we buy into a system, we're, we're showing tremendous growth, and, and that's the key. So it's great to see. Um, and then another thing, it's not a UVA system. Um, UVA did put on the winter retreat. They brought in the speaker. Speaker was Paul Van Buren-Santoya, um, and he was doing a presentation on his books, Leverage Leadership and Driven by Data. So we're really taking something that has been, been used in schools, and he's turned it around to some of the inner-city New York schools, um, using these books. And he gave the schools protocols to use, and told them, it's your system. Adapt it, change it, make it yours. And same, Ms. Cynthia, Mr. Lewis, and, and Ms. Larson, you know, they have used it in their classroom, and when I analyze the TLI scores, you know, we're seeing great results from their room. So I just wanted to tell you all, thank you. You're, you're buying into looking at every individual student, and I heard that today, that's the biggest change. We don't teach whole group, teach whole group, teach whole group. No. We're trying to find every individual kid's needs. And when I hear from the teachers, it, it's just, it, it's wonderful. So, thank you all.
All right, thank you everybody for being here tonight at Rema High School. Thank you, school board, for coming here. Uh, I was just thinking about how lucky we are to be in this school. About eight years ago, Mr. Tim Bond, one of your shepherds back here, helped us move into this school in a snowstorm, and it was the first, one of the first days of January. And literally, I, every day I come to work here, I almost have to pinch myself, cause it's just, it's, uh, compared to the old school, it's still like, almost a dream here that we're in, such a beautiful school. So, thank you for making that a reality for us. Tonight, uh, my zone here, Mr. Ferguson asked Rema High School just to take a few minutes, and I'm gonna call up a few of my staff and a student to honor her. Just to say, the, the teachers I'm gonna call up here in a minute, uh, two of them, Mr. Ray and Mr. Gibbons are nationally certified teachers, and, uh, the other one, Ms. Ancock, she's in the process of, uh, uh, becoming nationally certi, board certified, so that gives you an, an idea of what kind of teachers we're dealing with. We have great teachers here at Rema. I'm going to, before I call them up, uh, they're gonna talk about math and science and, um, and vocational, uh, education here at the school. I'm gonna, uh, talk for the English and the history departments. So, uh, I would like to invite Ayana Clayfish. Did you come up at this time? Ayana did us very proud here, what has been almost a month ago. Uh, the, uh, she competed in the National History Day competition and won the regional, and she went, went back, uh, for the state competition, came in third. And Ayana, could you just share something positive from that experience? And I think you brought some medals or ribbons.
Hello, um, hi, uh, my name is Ayana Clayfish. And, um, uh, I won't be able to talk as clearly as I wanted to because I just had my wisdom taken out the other day, so, anyway, um, so on April twenty-ninth, I went to Albuquerque to compete in the National History Day competition, and I came in third place within the category. And, um, it was my first time competing in the National History Day, and I'm really proud that I have come this far. So I'm very thankful for the opportunity that Rema gave me, and I'm very thankful for the people who supported me, because I couldn't do this by myself. So, um, participating in the National History Day competition was, uh, it was a very fun and fascinating experience. Um, there's a lot of, uh, events, uh, during that competition, like, um, I was able to take a tour in a museum, and I was able to, uh, look at, um, other projects done by other students from other schools. And, um, it was really fascinating to see and be around students who had the same objective as me, and we were all, uh, working towards the same goal. Uh, the event, um, the competition had a very bright and enthusiastic atmosphere and made a very positive impact on me. So, um, in order to create, um, my project, um, to be in the competition, uh, I learned many new skills and, um, uh, habits. Uh, I had to be proactive because I was working under pressure, and, um, for example, I had to do things like contacting historians and professors by email in order to acquire information that I need. And during the present, uh, during the co, uh, competition, I needed to make a presentation to the judges, and I was asked a lot of questions. So, um, I always remember to, um, be prepared for that. So I think participating in the National History Day really boosts my confidence and strengthens my skills. For example, I became a better communicator and organizer, and regardless of the results, um, the fact that I was able to participate in this competition was very meaningful to me. And, um, I highly encourage the students at Rema to participate and accomplish an academic goal, because the experience that I gained, um, was very beneficial. I also encourage the teachers at Rema to motivate your students to be high tutors and teach with enthusiasm. And so regardless of the results, whether you fail or succeed, I, um, think, um, you should encourage yourself to persevere until the end, because in the end, um, the experience that you gain will perpetuate throughout your life. Um, thank you.
Yeah, I'm very proud of Ayana, bringing home third place at state and first in the regional.
So this is the, um, what I won at the regional competition. And, um, I won this at the state competition, third place. And, um, I also, uh, won awards, um, that was related to the theme of my project. And, um, yeah, it was a very good experience for me.
Thank you, Ayana. Just a couple of words about our English department. We've been promoting reading since the second semester started, using the Accelerator Reader. And, uh, last Friday, we had Amazing Reader Day to celebrate those students who accomplished or achieved, um, points over and above, uh, A-plus status. And we had fifty, fifty, uh, fifty students in our school of a hundred and eighty-seven received the Amazing Reader Award, and we had a pizza party for them. And the other thing the English teachers, uh, did this year that I, I really liked, uh, to see excitement about writing, they use this Young Author Program to get students writing in the classroom. And now, uh, I'd like to, uh, I'm glad to hear Stephanie say that a lot of our students here learn by doing. So Ms. Ancock, if you could come up. Uh, she and our other science teacher, Mr. Cushman, uh, conducted a science fair this last month. Come on up, Marianne, I want her to say some, uh, Richie said keep it short, just talk about a couple of good things. But talk about learning by doing, the science fair, that's what it's all about.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm very proud to tell the board that, um, two thirds of our, of our students are taking science subjects, were able to do their science project experiments with creativity and originality. So the judges were telling me that Rema students rocks. We were inviting five judges outside the school, and we are, have also judges among the teachers. So we did a half-day, and we realized that half-day was not enough, so we wanted, we wanted it to be a whole-day event. And we would like to add to the science progress as well for our next, um, science fair endeavor. So the students are applying while they were learning inside the four walls of the classroom, and I would say that they were able to develop different scientific skills, especially on identifying the different variables in their, um, experiment. I would also like to thank parents for their support as well, that the students had to go home late sometimes, to be with us after school, um, having them one-on-one with the science projects. And, um, lastly, I would like to say that we are all amped for and aware of a mission that is, "Wager less, hard work equals success." Thank you.
Great call, and hope you come up with that one. But, uh, Mr. Gibbons, if you could come up here. Mr. Gibbons is our math department head, building test grader, and athletic director. And, um, I'm gonna let him say a few good things about math and maybe a couple of students, right?
Sure.
Those two in the back.
I forgot to mention I have a music teacher as well. Last weekend, or last Wednesday, we had our, uh, our spring concert. Ayana is a very accomplished viola player, so you missed a great performance. She performed an Edward Elgar piece.
Hey, she played at my son's wedding.
Yeah, Edward Elgar, and it was incredible, it was really beautiful. We also, on the athletic end of things, have two students that will be going to school in scholarship. Tanya Hill will be going to EMU on scholarship, and Jordan Nelson will be going to Fort Lewis College. And Jordan Nelson is going to Fort Lewis College on scholarship. Those two are students. They were here earlier, Jordan's here. It's another application of our, of our mission statement, where rigor, hard work equals success. They put in a lot of time and effort, and that's, that's resulting in success. In terms of math, our goal this year has been to really connect and apply mathematics. We noticed that students have a lot of good skills. They're able to do rote mathematics problems. They can solve linear equations all day, or solve a quadratic, you put it in front of them. But when they get into a situation where they have to apply that, they really struggle. It's a tactic that they're lacking. And in order to address that, I attended, last summer, I attended the STEM conference, STEM symposium that was put on by the state, and got some great ideas there. And we've really just tried to make an application for every single thing we do in math. One example is parabolic shapes. When we talked about those in one of my classes, we talked about all the applications. We talked about the guy with the disc, the parabolic disc on the side of the football field that collects the sound and gets the good, the sound of a good hit. We talked about the headlight of a car, how it focuses that beam. We even went as far as to take soda cans and polish the bottom. And we went outside and in a very safe manner, built fires with them by finding the focal point of that parabolic disc. And to do that with the students has really been helpful. We've also tried to apply, apply mathematics to, to life. We had a, I'll call it a seminar with seniors during our mentoring class. There are a lot of seniors that have applied to, have gotten into schools, but they're really concerned about the financial aspect of school and how they can be successful, and how they can not only get into school, but stay in school, and afford to be in school, and be successful in that way. And the biggest thing that we've noticed in the math department with that connect and apply idea is that it kind of flips the script. Usually, the teacher's asking the student questions, and now the students are asking us questions. How does this work, or why is this the case? Or, how can I be, how can I get a better interest rate on my student loan? Or, how can I approach this? What would be the best option for student housing, that kind of thing? And the students are really becoming engaged in learning in that way. And I think that's probably the biggest takeaway that I'd like to leave with you from this school year, is students are starting to question, they're starting to get answers. Another example from the science fair, we had a kid that, that really wanted to study sound and how it was amplified, and what shapes would produce the best application, what materials would produce the best application of sound. And he went so far as to contact a scientist with a, with a machine that would actually create a graph of the sounds. And he thought of those graphs and made, made some really, really interesting discoveries. And it was, it was kind of fun to, to track that progress and feed him information. There's a guy that I know that works in design, and he's working on a speaker design that requires no power, but uses the elliptical shape to create a better sound and double the sound of, say, a phone speaker without any electricity to be required. And it really tied in directly with what that student was doing. They were moving in parallel in a real-world application. It was beautiful to see. And so, that's kind of what we're trying to do in math. And hopefully, we continue with that, get more students involved, more students interested, asking questions, and really becoming proficient in the skills that they have. Thank you.
Mr. Ray's gonna talk about his vocational classes. And just, I gotta plug him a little bit. If you want to see good hands-on teaching, Stephanie, come over and visit any of his classes.
Okay, I'd like to welcome you all out tonight. And I wanna, I was asked to say some positive things. I wasn't sure that it was just on my classes, but...
What about the school?
About the school and that, right? So, one of the positive things I think is, that's good for the school, is to have the school board out. So, thank you guys for coming out tonight. We don't see you that often. And a lot of us don't get in there, and you won't get out here a lot. But you get to come and see and hear what we do. I am the vocational teacher, I've been here a long time. And I've got a lot of good kids that do some very good work. David mentioned a few things, I'll kind of lead in with him. He talked about those speakers, and he talked about how they apply their, their math and try to apply it to the real world. But we've gone even farther here at Rema. One of the positive things is the way that we can work together. When I've been building projects in the shop and we need trigonometry or geometry or, you know, those kind of things that I found practically in school, I wasn't very good at. But when, when we need that kind of stuff, I, I cross-work with the math department. And I get my kids to go there. And we may be working with some high-dollar chrome multi tubing or something like that, and there's enough to build one item, and there's no room for mistakes. So, that takes the, the math department to rework his, his kids a little bit and say, this is how you, this is how you apply this skill to actually make a project. And that's been from everything from, you know, motorcycles to hovercrafts and everything else. I think we blew some of you away at the board meeting last year with our hovercraft. Or the year before, I don't remember. We do a lot of things like that, that is cross-training, like sports. So, we, we work together here a lot. We work with the, as a community, we try to get the whole community involved. And, for example, just, I think it was May 5th, we worked with Ms. Pescenti and our school. And we provided ninety-nine, we were trying to hit a hundred, but we provided ninety-nine physicals, free physicals. We have a team of doctors that come out. And they supply the physicals that will give us our kids their sports ability for next year. Parents don't have to drive, no money. A lot of them are coming in saying, well, this just saved me eighty dollars and a drive to town. So, that's another positive thing here, is the way we're able to work with them up there and provide those community things. The doctors will, will give anybody physicals. We call it a senior citizen center, we call them. We put up signs around town, and they'll do whatever they need. They'll look at whoever they need to, if they come, we invite them all. So, I, I didn't write a speech. There's something I wanted, didn't want to forget. I, we had an academic banquet the other night. Is my fifteen seconds up?
That's our school, take as much time as you can be.
There was an academic banquet the other night. And for one reason or another, Mr. Morris could be there. And he asked me to be there, and I says, yeah, I'll, I'll go and make sure everything is all right. I didn't realize, believe, I got in there, they handed me the announcement of what do we call it, the program. And I looked down there, and I was the keynote speaker. And I didn't realize that.
That's why I didn't go.
I, so, my keynote spoke, I guess. But, we had a lot of, a lot of people in the A and B honor roll to speak positively about our school and a lot of awards there. We have a lot of good kids. We have, I'm gonna, one example of my classes of this year is a student named Kobe. He's a Zuni fellow. And he's a very hard worker, he's gonna graduate this year. One of the projects that he made this year was, he came in and he said, "I want to build a seven-string guitar." And we build those from scratch. And we build the neck, and we put the frets in. I said, I don't, he hadn't know anything about a seven-string guitar. I don't even know how to play one. And so, I told him, you're, you have to do the research and find out the nut width and the heel width and all that. And he did all that. And he came in, he completed it. And whoever is at graduation, I will get to hear him play it. It's completed, and it, it plays just like a, like something that you buy. It's a very nice instrument. So, that's just one example of my class, one of the projects in my classes. And I teach wood welding and auto. In, in my welding classes, I have, I'm pretty sure, four students enrolled in everywhere, from Navajo Tech, who I think Shawn Dell got a three thousand dollar, I think Shawn Dell, oh, five thousand. He got a five thousand dollar scholarship for welding, going to Navajo Tech. Very good welder, second-year welder. And the others are going to Tulsa, Oklahoma, to Tulsa Welding School, which is one of the best schools around. And I was in a meeting the other day, I think this is what really gets them excited about it, is I was in a meeting, a vocational meeting with, with Murphy. Mr. Murphy, who's building the elementary school over there. And he said, "I'm paying my welders forty-eight dollars an hour right now." That's what his welders are getting paid there in that school. So, they can go anywhere from twenty, twenty-five, thirty, up to forty-eight dollars an hour in those welding programs when they come out there. Let's see, another positive thing here. We, in this school, we celebrate a lot of diversity. And we are about eighty-something percent Navajo. And a large part Zuni, I don't think I know the number. Thirty percent Zuni. At one time, when I was in third grade, I think I thought it was, I thought I was a Zuni because I grew up down there. And so, I don't really think of it that hard. I graduated with Ms. Pescenti's dad. So, I know a lot of these people. And here, we had our seniors leaving, whatever day it was, the sixth. We had our seniors leaving, and to celebrate them, we had a Zuni drum group in. We had Navajo dancers, some of our kids. Oh, yeah, they were really good. And they work well together. And so, we try to celebrate every culture that we have, that we can in a school, within this area. So, we really try to work together in that way. And I don't know, I think my time is up. I don't know what else I can say. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Ray, thank you, school board. Yeah, I just want to say something, Mr. Bond back there. I really appreciate my years as a teacher here, and he should have fired me like that ago. So, I'm just grateful I stuck in there, and he kept me because it's been a rewarding experience. So, thank you.
One, one comment here, two comments. One is, thank you, principals, for letting us meet some of the teachers at the same time during your reports. And secondly, I want to just say, I appreciate hearing mention of applied math and applying math because I've said at meetings before, as much as I liked math in high school, or learned to like it, algebra, advanced algebra set up by the state, sometimes there's a barrier for kids, that's an unnecessary barrier in terms of fields they can go into. And so, here, the effort to make applications for some of that math so it's meaningful. Because there are a lot of forms of applied math which are just as valuable, valuable to me as algebraic math. But to make the links either way, I think is very important because a lot of kids fonder when it comes to advanced algebra. And then they go to college and they face an algebra requirement, and people don't always know why. Why do you have to have that algebra? You know, it may or may not fit with the field. If it fits with the field they're going into, and there is a logic in algebra that's valuable in terms of, you know, what it does in terms of logical thinking. But I'm glad to hear you're making the applications.
I would also like to make a comment. Thank you very much, principals and staff, for coming out and giving us this report. You know, we mentioned to Mr. Trupetti, and he says that he mentioned to the principals that principals meetings, that we would, I'm speaking for myself, but, and I might get in trouble, might get myself in trouble for this, but I really want to be involved. I really, I heard you guys mentioned a spring concert and an academic banquet. If you don't know my email address, I have some cards on me that you guys can email me and give me heads-up on these events because I really want to attend. I know I'm busy, as I did with other things with my own personal job. But, you know, that's one thing that I always wanted to know about. And I stressed to Mr. Trupetti and to Terry Fraser is that I want to stay involved with the schools that I represent. And Rema is one that I represent. So, please, if you guys can, email me on upcoming events. And I would, I would try my best to fit it in my schedule. So, thank you very much, and thank you for everything you do here at Rema. I hear that.
I just want to think, say thank you for the presentation. They were very informative. But I do wish that, you know, at some point, we do need to hear the negative. And like you said, we were told just to give the positive. I think as school board members, we need to be aware of any concerns or any, anything that might need to be addressed. Thank you.
Corinne? Good evening, members of the board, board chairs, superintendent, staff, guests. My name is Corinne Smith, and I am part of the GMCS public relations team. And one of the things we've been doing is going around the district and taking pictures of various events that are taking place. And one of the things that happened since the last board meeting was there was a parent night over at Washington Elementary where students got a chance to come to the school with their parents and ask questions in reference to the following school year and got information in reference to classes or books or whatnot that they, that they will have the following school year. And then this is something that Gallup High School did. They do their Navajo language and culture classes. They displayed the four worlds. And that's displayed in the boardroom at central office. And then part of the park activities or test preparation, Huande O'Niate had the opportunity, the students there had the opportunity to take, dictate their teacher to the wall. And in preparation, they also wrote down encouraging words for one another. And there, they're writing down whatever they wanted to encourage each other for the upcoming testing. And then there you see Ms. Bishop getting taped to the wall. And then there, guess what, Huande O'Niate, it's okay to take the teacher to the wall. And then over at Washington Elementary, as part of park also, they had a prep rally. And each of the students there, grade level, did a little cheer for the first and fifth graders that were getting ready for the park test. And then here, Principal Bishop also had incidents for the, for attendance. She had two bikes each for boys and girls. And then over at Maimara High School, they had Mr. Maimara come out. And it was a live webinar that they had where Mr. Maimara was asked questions about his time in war. So, the Maimara students also had an opportunity to write questions on a piece of paper, and they gave it to the narrator there. And then they also had people from, students from around the country come and ask questions, and he, he answered those questions. And then here, over at Tohachi Elementary, they had the Four Corners Outdoors, individuals come up from Annapolis Valley and kind of just talk to the students about geology, about rock formation and so on and so forth, and about volcanoes. And then they have an opportunity to create their own volcanoes. And then here, she's just kind of showing them how to do it, how to do. And then here, she's just kind of showing them how to do it, how to do the volcano. And then here, they got a chance to do it on their own. And then over at the EDC Building, they had an EDC professional development, um, training. And then over at Maimara High School, a senior, um, Michael Marquez, I don't know if you've guys heard, um, senior wrote his own book, and it was published, and it's called, um, Something Alvin, I remember. And here, he's over at Rio West Mall, he's signing, um, books for individuals. And his book is available online at Amazon, and I think they said it was going to be available at, um, Butler's for purchase.
What's his last name?
Um, Marquez, Mike Homerquez. Yeah. And here is the title of the book, The Power of Alvin. And he said it took him a year to write this. And then on administrative professionals, they, um, our superintendent, associate superintendent, and some directors, um, put money together, and they had, uh, lunch and cater by the SFP Department, uh, for their administrator or, uh, the administrative assistants. And they got an hour to celebrate and kind of just swing all around one another and have And here's our superintendent, superintendent talking to the group. And then over at JFK, part of the Navajo Nation, um, they had Building Communities of Hope, and there, um, they go around various schools across the Navajo Nation with the Vice President of the Navajo Nation, and they talk to students about suicide prevention. So JFK was their last stop for this school year. And then here, we have the Navajo Nation Vice President talking to the student over at JFK. So next year, they said they're going to pick off, pick up from here, so they're going to be visiting other schools that they didn't visit this year. And then over at, um, Rockview Elementary, as part of Navajo Sovereignty Day, they had, um, a little celebration about various, um, Navajo, Ardenet, uh, culture. And then they had various booths for the students to go through, and they had dances, Then at Gallup Central High, they, um, turned their, uh, library into a coffee house, and they had various students from within the school, uh, showcase their poetry, their art, and, um, singing. So that was something that they did, and they brought in the artist to kind of, um, discuss and talk about his art and what it took him to get to where he's at. And here's one of the students. And then EDC had a fun walk and run over at the Gallup Sports Complex, and they invited the community, and they had students and parents and everyone come out and do a five K run or walk. And here's some students running. And then, um, one event that happens every year is, this is the Ninth Annual Navajo Language and Cult- Cultural Festival, and day one consisted of the high school competition. So this is, um, students from Tohachi High, uh, doing the basket dance. And this is another group of, uh, students also doing the basket dance. And then here are judges, um, some of them are, uh, staff from central office, and we had, um, individuals from the Navajo Nation and also from the State Department judging where they're. And that, this is some of, um, um, events that are going around the district, and as I was listening to the principals here, I think it would be a good opportunity for you all to kind of let us know in the PR department what's going on, and then we can come out and take pictures and also including the slideshow. So upcoming would also be the rest of the cultural festival, and I know those graduations that are keeping place, so we will go around, take your pictures, and that will all be the next session. Thank you.
Excellent. Question, thank you for that. Those are fun. I like the ones with the teachers taped to the wall, but I do have a pointed question. How many of those photos have been sent or been used for articles to send to the media?
That's one thing I think is in the next, um, what we'll be doing next, because now we just like gathering, uh, pictures. There's a few things that go out to the media, so, but eventually.
How many?
But right now, I know there's probably about four or five, but right now, I take a lot of the pictures, so I think in the future, those will go into articles and also start distributing it to the media. So that, that is in the, in the future.
Well, I don't want future, I think they need to be current. And I bring this up because I brought it up at a previous meeting about the role of the PR department, which does things I don't even think about, but the one thing I'm aware of is, is I don't see many pictures in the paper from our schools, and I say, you know, to take a picture of a student reading a death at a desk isn't very exciting, but there's a lot of exciting stuff you just showed us, and those are, would be good interest pictures, and I think they need to get out more and quickly. Thank you.
Okay, in the superintendent's report, um, I was asked to give the report a little different, um, talk about, um, what we're looking at, what we're doing, what we're working on, barriers, um, what we're doing to overcome the barriers and such. Um, over the last several weeks, one of the big, two topics that really have taken a big chunk of our time are, are goal credit and then the legal issues. We are working goal credit, we met with NTU on Wednesday, was that right, Paula, Thursday? Thursday, um, met with Western New Mexico the week before that. Some great things coming out of those that are very time-consuming, but are going to be very good for our kids. NTU's actually working on a engineering certificate, and we're discussing ways we can go to the credit and get the kids into, into engineering. And then with Western, we're looking at a goal credit program more towards the medical field, um, whether it be veterinary, nursing, doctor, anything that's in the health related. So we've had a lot of good meetings with them, we're discussing how we can do it, um, the direction, cost, uh, roadblocks, how to get it, what's that? How, how to get the logistics to county schools and in-town schools, what media we can use, et cetera. Um, I did email you some legal responses that we're working on in the deposition. Um, this is the deposition for the adequacy and uniformity lawsuit, um, the big one that will be going to court, not this summer, but next summer. Uh, state lawyers have been in town, um, deposing several witnesses, um, they gave us a list of approximately fifty-two areas that they're looking at. Um, I did not want to answer all fifty-two, I can answer all fifty-two. Some of them very in-depth, some of them just to skin. They, they want to get into our budgets and finance, um, Javona can talk deeper than I can sink, and I swim like a rock, so I can be quite deep. Um, Paula talking on Indian Ed, um, Mr. Hyatt on recruiting, uh, on different areas like that. So most of the team has been deposed, um, they ran out of time, just because I think the lawyer couldn't break Javona. So they will be coming back to, to pick up some more with us. So that, that has been taking a lot of time, not only our responses to our lawyers, but then actually prepping and being deposed by the state's lawyers. Uh, we've been spending a lot of time, um, talking about professional development. It's another good thing of what we're hitting, what we're looking at doing for next year, because that is some of the roadblocks. Uh, we're wanting to move all schools up a level of expectations, except we're having three levels of expectations, only going to two, so we need to roll out the professional development next year for that. So we've been spending a lot of time developing the professional development, um, looking at those, um, talking to principals, what they feel their schools need. Really, the big overall consensus is tier one instruction, strengthening tier one, getting away from whole group instruction, how to do the strategies to do small group and differentiated instruction. So we've been spending a lot of time on that. And again, the roadblock is, it's hard to work, and we get a lot of pushback. And this district, I think, is like any other district, it, it really runs a lot of rumors. Rumors float, um, then people get frustrated, and as people get frustrated, they're not as anxious to tackle change, because change is difficult in the first place. So, so the biggest barrier, and Mr. Mitchell, you asked, asked for negative, you know, that's one of the biggest negatives, is, is rumors. We, we spend a lot of times discussing rumors, a lot of times of, of how are we going to overcome, because a lot of the rumors are based on bad data or bad information. So we are looking and discussing as, as a leadership team of, of how we're going to actually present this stuff ourselves. And Mr. Hamlin, like you said, we've got some great things going on in the district, how do we get that information out there? And, and that's some of the stuff that we're, we're discussing right now. Di- different things like that, uh, the rumor county versus city, um, you know, we're, we're putting a lot of data together to, to actually paint a good picture of what, what goes on. You know, does, does in-town get everything? Um, you know, we're, we're going to be putting out some, some data, because the cost of education in the county is higher, and we do put a lot more resources there than we do to other places. So we're, we're preparing, again, how to, how to paint our own, own message. Um, what I'm hearing from principals, it's a long year, and it's starting to wear on people. Um, they're, they're, they're starting to get frustrated, um, starting to get worried, are they going to see the results now that park testing is almost over and finishing the window? Um, what can we do? They've suggested sending out some positive messages. Um, so I've started sending out, when I have a minute here, a minute there, starting to send out messages to, to all the staffs, individually, based on the school itself. Just little things that I've seen going on, some positive things going on. How do I pick them up? How, how do we let them know, you know, they're not in the boat alone, we're, we're there also. So a lot, a lot going on. At the next meeting, when we do have the recommendations, are, it's more of a, the, the presentations and work session, I'll, I'll have a lot more for you, um, since this one was more the, the actions and such. I, I didn't go into it as deep. Only recommendations on policy or anything is, um, we did finish the Navajo Language and Culture Committee meeting. Shouldn't say finished, we, we finished a phase of it, we're, we're getting to one policy, and now we can start moving with the committee towards implementation. So, uh, those, those are some of the items we're, we're working on this term. I'm hoping that's what you're looking for.
Um, Mr. President, may I have one question? Mr. Trupetti, when you mentioned rumors, um, heard rumors without any real background information or factual information firsthand about contracts, can you tell us kind of where we're at in terms of contracts across the board? I, I mean, I've been told things I don't know whether they hold up or not, whether certain contracts, to the fact that some contracts have been let and others have been held, and some positions are being acted on in terms of next year's contracts and some are not, and I, I don't, what, what's going on?
Sure. Um, all, all contracts pertaining to employees that fall under the collective bargaining agreement, Mr. Hyatt, throw something at me if I go straight on you. Um, all contracts for employees under the collective bargaining agreement have been given, um, except for those that, um, are on a growth plan or, um, staff that is under the three years that were really taken a close look at, they're not tenured, and are , are they, they're meeting expectation type. So there are some, some contracts that haven't been given out. Um, the principal has talked to those people who, they haven't been given out, discussing, uh, again, they, they should be aware they're already on a growth plan, and our goal is to make them a better employee to where we can offer them the contract. But, um, theirs are on hold until, um, the principals made up their mind on, they have or they have not. So, um, teachers, custodians, secretaries, uh, secretary, did we get on theirs? Yes. Um, assistants, bus drivers, MIO, R and B, they've all been given their contracts, pretty much the only contracts we have not rolled out of administration this year.
There's a few areas we have not given contracts. School sites, we see a lot of contracts, and so there are some C D employees that obviously can get, or do some of them. So for example, transportation, of course, that's a contract you need to announce. You did school sites.
Are there people who have been, who are not in the collective bargaining unit who have been already told they won't receive a contract, even though their group hasn't still received them yet, or are they in limbo until they know?
Not that I know of. There are only about five contracts that have not been given out thus far.
President, sir, um, I have a question. I remember reading something in the legislative, um, in one of the conferences I attended, that they were saying that, um, tenure at three years was now changed to two years. Do you know when that takes effect? Is that now, this year, next year?
I can speak to that. So when an employee receives their third contract, that's when they become so, so-called tenured.
It's an interpretation of the law. It's still three years, but once you offer them that third-year contract, so it's not at the end of your third year you gain your, your tenure, it's.
Once you receive your third.
Offer that third contract, then you become tenured. So it's really a, a court interpretation, um, somebody that sued because at the end of their third year, they were let go, so they didn't want tenure, and they sued. And so this is really coming from case law rather than from the legislative law. So case law is dictated, but it's at the beginning of your third year that you get tenure, fifth year off of the contract.
I have one other specific question. Does the Indian Education Area JOM Coordinator have been of some concern for a while? We're posting two positions now, the JOM Program Coordinator and the Indian Education Coordinator, and the description lists both of them as under the Associate Superintendent of Support Services. So I want to ask about that in terms of, so, in other words, the Indian Education Coordinator, if I read this right, is not over the JOM Coordinator? So you expect any possible conflict there? You got people, two people working in the same area? Neither one is coordinating the Indian Ed area, don't, I mean, the one that's coordinator is not really coordinating the JOM.
Again, it's fiscal, it's fiscal and it's program. Um, the, the Indian Education is your, is your curriculum, you know, it's actually driving the lessons, curriculum, assessments, I don't know what I think we'll see. Um, the JOM is more managing the fiscal budget of JOM. They'll, they'll still work together hand in hand, because, uh, JOM does guide and provide input to, to the Indian Ed program. But again, the, the JOM Coordinator is more of the fiscal. We've seen problems with the reimbursements in this year, um, keeping up with the stipends and such. I was just notified today that, you know, we weren't keeping up with the stipends and such, and we've gone way over budget on that type of stuff. So it's a person doing the day-to-day fiscal operations, and then a person doing the day-to-day program operations that we're trying to do.
So then is Title VII, like Indian Ed money, that comes under the general Indian Ed Coordinator and not JOM? Something I just think we should keep our eye on, because maybe that should be a whole department that's consolidated in some way with somebody. that's consolidated in some way with somebody who's really overseeing that directly and comprehensively. See, thank you.
Sir, I think that's why I voiced my concern last time, because we did have, we did have a director in that position. And again, that was taken away from Indian Education. And I think that was our vital positions that we needed. Again, due to the fact that we are a high percentage of Native American students. And it just seems like with the restructuring that happened, you know, there's a lot of things that went wrong with our Indian Education program. And that should be one of our strengths in our district. And right now, as we've heard from several parents, it's struggling. And I think as a board, we all see that. And now it's a point to where, how are we going to fix that? Something needs to be done, and I think they've been voicing that for months now. So I think that we need to re-look at this program and implement things better for our Indian Education students.
Mr. President?
Richard?
Yeah, well, first of all, I guess since we're talking Indian Education here, question for Giovanna as far as reimbursements. Have we found anything out in going on reimbursements?
So I spent my weekend working on the Johnson O'Malley reimbursements. All the reimbursements from July through April will be done tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. And then contract, has that been submitted then as well?
The J O M application will be submitted tomorrow. We're just making sure that, but the I E C agreed to on May 6th is what's going to be on the application. And we just need final signatures again, and we're going to submit that along with the monthly reports.
So, okay, so now I'll talk, you know, when we have concerns and, and that are given, such as resolutions from chapters or any other concerns that are written up, you know, I don't think those should be considered as rumors, those should be taken care of and addressed. County and city issue, you know, we're willing to start, I mean, this is an old, old issue, and I think we're willing to start coming up with some type of solution to fix that problem between county versus city.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, but here comes the negative. It's comments like this, Mr. Mitchell, that roach the rumors and the negativity. The county and city are treated with equity, not equality, equity. We have to put a lot more money into the county to provide similar experiences for students that have larger schools, that just the scale goes. And when we have somebody, a particular board member, who's saying we have problems and we have to fix it, that adds to the rumor mill, and this is some of the stuff that it breeds. And when it breeds, then we have trouble. So at the next board meeting, we will be doing a presentation that shows the staffing patterns for county and city, and funding sources, and allocations, and we'll be able to show different things like that that we've been trying to do for the last two years. And those are some of the things is, a statement without data can be considered a rumor, and it's detrimental to what we're trying to do.
Well, the reason I brought that up is because you're the one that mentioned it. You're the one that brought up the issue between county and city. So I was just wondering what the solution would be. And my solution, my solution, I would think would be going out to the communities and educating them on what you just said, as far as budget and equity.
Mr. President?
Mr. Alito?
I think with the, I think sometimes we may look at them as rumors, but I think if we look back, they're outcries, and they are, they get to the point to where our constituents and our parents and our students and our staff are frustrated. And sometimes they may not realize these things that they're, of what the statement that you just said. Again, I know we talked about this during our budget meeting that we had with Mr. Benidi, but it's not, you guys are not showcasing that. You guys are not providing that information. I know it's going to come up in the next presentation, but that should have been done before, and that will show how the district is providing those services to the county. What troubles me when you walk in here into this building and into this room right here, and it's really hot. And that was a complaint that we had again at Navajo. And I, and yes, you did explain that, but I think if we continue to forget or not really realize what our county schools and the outskirts are facing, the challenges, and not listening to them the first time, then it gets bigger. And then it gets bigger, and then where complaints are filed, and then they're coming to the board members for their outcry. And I think if administration would have fixed it when the first issue arise or awareness of it, it wouldn't grow so big. And I think with the, and if you want evidence, sir, I'm sorry, but some of them are just concerns that we're getting from our constituents that want to see the equality and equity in both areas. And I don't think that's hard to ask. I went to some schools that you can note, you can see that the students are asking. We heard some in the boardroom ourselves from students that they want to change also. So please, listen to them, administrators, Mr. Hyatt, Mrs. Hanks, Mrs. White. Please, just listen to these individuals and see what, and I'm really excited for your presentation. And that's what I asked for, was to see what is happening in the county. And I hate to say versus the city, because it shouldn't be that way. It shouldn't, we shouldn't be wording it that way at all. But I think if we need to pay more attention to what our constituents and our staff and our teachers are asking us for, that we want to have such a division.
And one more item here is, I would like to have a presentation from N T U on their due credit process as well, because I know they were mentioning a free program where they would offer our students free classes during the summer. So, you know, I really think that, I would like to hear a presentation from them to see what they would have to offer. And if that is the case, to actually be able to receive free classes for our students. You know, summer's coming up here in a couple of weeks, and I would like to hear what they would have to offer.
That information has been sent to all schools, and we're asking to you to come. It's not a free program. It is, but they don't want us to say free. It's a tuition waived program. So it is free for the student, but it's not free for the university, it's tuition waived. And that information, they're sending us a flyer for that program and a teacher education program that we're giving out to all staff and all students.
Thank you, Board, for a little Q and A session. Let's continue. On our agenda, we do have our Indian Education Committee report, chair report. Again, Board, this is the I E C report. Next up today, we do have our board reports. Mr. Yon?
Good evening, Board of Trustees.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, administrators, superintendent, staff, parents, guests. First of all, you get a chance to do a nicely-written report. So I'm going to give you an oral report and some that are written later. We've had a meeting on May 2nd and May 6th. We had a great collaboration meeting during this time. We successfully had some good input. We worked on making some minor changes to our bylaws. And we worked with Mr. Chupetti at this time, at that time. And I'd like to thank Mr. Ness for being there. A lot was done. This was probably the first time in years that we've actually got some work done and worked in compromising a lot of our things just to get, just to work together, and I appreciate that. Our funding application, we finally successfully went line by line with Ms. Paulette White, and I thank her for being there as well. We got, went through it. I went to the office on Friday, signed the application. Aside from that time, we were having a work session that will be on June 3rd at 1:00 a.m. With the list of the technical assistance I requested, that will be on the agenda. We're going to have a half-a-day work session. And I asked all our parents to be there at that time, and I would like, still like to invite one of you board members to attend. Yes.
So has the application been submitted?
No, it hasn't. I'll get to that in just a minute. At that time, we also was informed about the, we were also involved on creating the application, the job description for the J O M Coordinator. We were also involved in creating and a job dis, well, not so much creating, but have input on the job description for the traditional counselor, what we wanted. A lot of my concerns were, a lot of our Native American students are always pushed aside, and we have truancy problems, and none of our counselors are doing any type of intervention with them. They're all academic counselors. I'd like to speak for some of our native students here in our schools. We're having those issues as well. I am trying to work toward the district rather than expel them. What do we do? Why can't we help parents? We push them, we push them out of the school system, or where do we see them 10 years later? We see them at N C I, the N C I programs, we see them walking down the street. And just think, those were our students. And I want to do better for our students now. We need to better educate our students. We need to teach them and let them know they can be successful. Yes, we praise our students here, but we've got to keep doing it all the time. But even praise our lower, lower-grade students. I don't see that. I do not see our lower-grade students being praised. It's always the higher-ups. We need to, even when they're a little proficient, we need to start commending them. And that's what I don't see. Okay, moving along, but that was part of the traditional counselor that we want implemented. Okay, this morning, I was informed that we no longer have a coordinator, J O M coordinator. I don't know who is going to be working with us. I, it's, I like to say it's unfortunate that our coordinators were appointed by the district. We, we've tried, I'm not kidding, we've tried to work with people they appoint. And when they're not comprehending to what is, what the program was all about, we're failing. I'm still wanting, I don't want this to burden our program. Whoever is now going to be put in that position, I hope they can still pick up and continue. I was also informed our reimbursements were submitted for July to January. The next reimbursements will be submitted. I don't have an update budget, other than what was given to us. Mr. and Ms. Paulette White gave, had given us a budget, but it was repetitive from the past two months. We don't, I don't know, you know, what, where we're at financially. And if we're overspent on our salary or stipends, we're not aware of that. We did do some transfers, I don't know where that's at either. I didn't hear any more word on our 63K. I don't know if that's still in Wonder Rock. That was two weeks ago, I was told it was still at Wonder Rock. I don't know if anybody's following up on it. Also, we, the biggest concern right now I have is the program funds. I want to make sure that we spend what we have now. And, you know, Alice Dotson's been really patient with us. I mean, we've went against the M O A, you know, we're based, and she's been real lenient with us, submitting our application late and our reimbursement, saying almost a whole year later. And I think we're recited for that. I think last year, we almost didn't get a reimbursement because we were over 30 days late. But now we're a whole year, and I don't know what, where that's going to, what's going to happen with that. Next month's meeting is June 11th. We're going to have an election of new officers. I don't know if I will still be your president next, next month. It could be another parent, but I stress to all our parents to have a try at being a president. But with that said, I appreciate Mr. Ness for being involved. Our work session, like I said, will be June 3rd. That is my verbal report.
Thank you.
June 3rd is at 9:00 o'clock.
Do you know exactly what you're going to be doing in your work session? What are they going to be?
I wrote a letter to this superintendent, and I talked about technical assistance regarding our budgets, the process of requisitions, the process of travel requests, Opens Meeting Act. And I believe I mentioned something to him verbally to clarify one other thing. I can't remember off the top of my head. But it was everything that I had requested for the past several months. And we finally came to an agreement that those technical assistance will be provided to us on Friday.
Good. Giovanna, could you maybe clarify and clear up the reimbursement issue?
So the reimbursement issue that we're in this year is pretty much the same situation we were in last year. We did end up at the end of the year with $31,000 approximately that was not going to be reimbursed from the Navajo Nation, but that didn't have anything to do with the timeliness of the reimbursements being submitted.
Okay, so first thing that was, the reimbursements were submitted for July through January, is that true?
No.
There has been zero reimbursement submitted?
Zero, and they will all, July through April will be submitted tomorrow.
This morning, we thought, we did have July and January ready to roll. But we decided since we're going to be doing the application and the rest of the month, we decided just to put everything together and deliver it all at once. So tomorrow will be delivered and up today.
I just want to mention to the board that I did attend the May 2nd meeting, the budget meeting as well as the special meeting. It was a good dialogue meeting. I would think our superintendent, as well as our superintendent, for being there, they were very patient with the committee, going page by page, in some cases, page line by line, discussing the program application. So I do know that there were some changes they made during that time. Our superintendent was open to some of the changes within the bylaws. There's some stuff that I saw that I, I wanted to speak about I E C, but maybe in the next meeting. But I do want to attend the next meeting again, the June 11th meeting, and as well also the June 3rd meeting. So I won't be here, so we'll sit and listen. But I think overall, this progress is growing. It's not growing by a lot like I, like maybe some of us have expected, but it's, it's, yeah, progressing to that centerline, to finding common ground. Hopefully, in the coming months, it gets better. Hopefully, we'll see you back in I E C officers again in the ranks. So just with that, I just want to say thank you again to our I E C as well as our management staff, so.
If you remember what you asked me, when you came over, because I don't think anybody can.
Yeah, I'll, I'll...
I've got the other list. But I can't allow you to remember what you asked me.
Okay, I wrote it down somewhere.
We...
Mr. President, I just wanted to say thank you for your report, Monica. And I think one thing that we could, we need to continue to... one thing that we could, we need to continue to stress, and I think from the REMA community that's here, I think we need more parents to be on our Indian Education Committee. One of the requirements that we have is that we have a parent, a student in our, in the district, and then you can represent on the Indian Education Committee. There's a lot of confusion sometimes when people say it's for Navajo students or parents, but it's not, it's Indian education. So, you know, any tribe can sit, any tribal member that's a parent of a student can sit on that committee, so please, if you're here and you want to stress that at the chapter house, or within your community, with letters home, stressing that we do need more Indian education parents. Monica is doing an awesome job representing you guys through the REMA, but she also needs help, so please stress that within your community. The other thing I wanted to mention, that we were talking one time about was, you know, having the Indian Education Committee give a report, and then also bilingual, and maybe alternating the two, because, you know, there's, again, the way the media rolls with things, you know, it just seems like, they say that we're just centered around Indian education, but we're beyond that, you know, we do have some bilingual things happening, we do have some special education things happening, we have UVA things happening, but I think if we alternate that, like, JOM Indian Education's always on the agenda, they're always giving us a report every school board meeting, you know, and I think if we put other entities in there, because I think special education is very important, Carmen's here right now, our lobbyists are here right now, we need to center on other programs and see what's happening, and instead of just when there's a problem that arises, we pull them up. I think we need to do that, just like Indian Education's there, every, every board meeting for us. So, just a recommendation, but I think we need to have those reports that are very important, thank you.
I rest my case on that issue. I've been asking to have different programs come on, but, but I do think IAC on that report, thank you very much again for that. Welcome to your reports too, whether it's the board reports, please board members keep it just to your, to your board reports, which you attended meetings, offices, Mr. Henry.
Thank you. I'll mention some of the things that in themselves were not work, some of them were entertainment almost, but I did attend, of course, the committee that was working on Navajo Language and Culture Policy Proposals, and some of that's coming on the agenda this evening. I got to one day of the Navajo Language and Culture Festival, it was great, hundreds of kids, hundreds of parents, just, it's one of those big events, and people who don't go don't know how big it is. I went to Central High, there's a young native poet, Tanaya Winder, she's Ute and Shoshone, he's come out with a new book, and had come to be aware of her because she was on our budget, our spending printout, and I wondered what we're spending that much money for, because there'd been an earlier question of how much do we pay presenters, and the business office kindly provided, and then I happened to hear her on Native America Calling on the radio the very next week, and she was very interesting, so I went over just to hear her. The reason I mention it here is because she did three sessions, three groups of students in the library, Mrs. Ta arranged it, and the students were just riveted, and so was I. The students were just as attentive and tuned into her as could be, she was really good, and it was good to see, see the, see her presentation, but see the students really getting something out of it. I went to the evening program that Ryan Hernandez organized with the instrumental ensemble, music teachers, and a group of teachers and staff as a women's choir, and Mr., what's his name, Chirrak, did the drum thing that he specializes in, and then a student orchestra that, what was neat about that evening, why I wouldn't bother to mention it, is because staff and students were doing things together, even in the orchestra, it was both music teachers and students, and also students from Winderock playing with Gallup students, and they did a nice job. And then I went to, of course, the Crown Point graduation, and then I went up to the annual water energy, what is it called, water and energy management or conservation thing that McKinley County puts on, some of you have probably been there, it's a great event, 20, 20-plus organizations doing demonstrations for kids, everything from the city electrical department, to Sandia Lab, to Navajo Nation EPA, group, people doing, organization doing things on birds and water and wildlife and environment, they had a red-tailed hawk, and they had another hawk, and just some neat stuff. And the kids, again, were just taking part, and really responsive, but I want to, I don't want to end on this note, but I looked at the list of schools, and they were all town schools, so I asked the coordinator, I said, "Were just the town schools invited?", and she said, "No." I called the fourth and fifth grade teachers at every. Because they're closer, and they, even the grant operating, putting on this event, actually paid for the transportation, she said, the schools didn't even have to, they had to arrange the buses, but they didn't have to pay for the buses. So, the problem is, if all the schools would have tried to come, they didn't have enough, they only had, they had as many as they could handle, but it was kind of strange, because I always noticed that, and I said, "Oh, are we not inviting the further out schools?", and she said, "No, we invited everybody," but whether they were the ones, the first ones, you know, to respond, because they are closer, and they've been there before, so they ended up being on the list first, but the, the unfortunate thing about that is, it was such a great event, I wish all the kids could have been there, so.
Mr. President, thank you. I, I attended also the same event with the music ensemble that was very, very well done. I really enjoyed that evening. I also attended the budget meetings with Mr. Manidi and administration. We attended a very short audit meeting with Mrs. Ains, but then we had to leave Mr. Manidi and I again, but it was, that was fine. I attended the graduation for middle college, also Gallup High School, Crown Point, and Theroux. All of them very, it's nice to see the families so happy and celebrating with their youth. I still got some more this week, including REMA, I'll be back on Thursday evening. Also, went to the Jefferson celebration, bittersweet moment for the school, but it was really nice, there's one grandfather I was talking to while I was enjoying my cookie, but they were saying, he was telling me that he was one of the first to come to Jefferson, and now it's his granddaughter's turn to attend the new school, so that was a really nice conversation I had with him. I also attended the Twin Lakes Health Fair, so that's my report, sir.
I attended the Tohachee Chapter House Meeting in Tohachi. I also met with the Navajo Nation along with Priscilla and Mr. Hittman in Winderock, and presented to the Hess Committee. We hoped to come to a, an agreement between the council and the Gallup McKinley County School Board. We will be meeting with them again soon on legislation that they will be proposing to the council. I also attended the Navajo Language and Culture Festival for one day. I did go to the Crown Point graduation as well.
Thank you, board members. I have everything similar among their schedules. One thing that I attended was the Indian Culture Festival at Mymera High School, it was really impressive, a lot of students there. Lately, we did attend the Crown Point graduation, and Theroux graduation. We have other things coming up, hopefully in the next quarter, we can have some more updates on the different meetings we attended. With that, on your board member, on your notices and communication announcements, May 25th is the last day of school, May 26th is professional development day, May 30th is Memorial Day, June 34th is the New Mexico School Board Association Ball Conference in Albuquerque, June 6th is our next quarter of education meeting, and that will be at the boardroom in Gallup. And the list, after that, just the graduation that are still yet to happen, that's listed there. We will go ahead and go on now to our.
I was just notified during the board meeting, May 19th, Lincoln Elementary, Navajo Language and Culture Class, they're going to do some presentations and dances, and they had actually invited the Navajo Nation Council, and we received word that this member of the Navajo Nation Council are going to come to the school.
Titus, can you repeat that, so that it can be caught on the?
Yes, I'll use my. May 19th, Lincoln Elementary, they're going to be showcasing the Navajo Language and Culture Class to the Navajo Nation Council. You can find the email where it came to me here.
REMA, while he's looking for that, do we have any announcements of upcoming events for you from REMA?
Graduation, 30/9, 6:00 PM.
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty.
Yes. And then I also received word, State Fire Marshal signed up on Jefferson today, so those students will be in the building tomorrow. Thank goodness, because we didn't have a plan B where to put them.
One announcement on May 20th, REMA Elementary is having their, is our reading program. Sorry.
May 20th, REMA Elementary is having a workshop for our parents, along with award celebrations. We're going to be providing our parents with math and reading activities for this summer before students come back in July, that starts at 9:00. Also, at 1:00 that same day, we are having our fifth grade promotion committee and celebrate our students' classes. 1:00 for fifth grade, for the entire school, it starts at 9:00.
Twenty-fifth, Crown Point, 25th, hello?
Twenty-fifth, Crown Point Mid is having their eighth grade promotion at 1:00 PM.
Mr. President, excuse me. I just wanted to say, when Kevin and I were at the, walking around after the Crown Point graduation, they were very, very thankful to have four board members attending their graduation, us four all ended up in Crown Point, and they were very thankful, and they wanted us to extend, to, their thanks to the board, so thank you very much, board members, for, I don't know if that's ever been done, I think Titus said it hasn't, but I think it's something that shows how much we really went, wanted to be there for Crown Point, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you again, Secretary, for that. Fortunately, Thursday, we'll be splitting up, or someone's going to Navajo Pine, so I'm, REMA, so it will be, I probably have to split myself in half to what goes. But with that board, we do have that two consent agenda items that were on the list that you wanted to discuss furthermore. The first one is B3, oh, sounds a bit big over, 8B3, 8B3, the Gallup High Band, I believe Mr. Hittman had questions on that, Mr. Hittman?
Thank you. The answer might be quite simple, and could have been done perhaps under the consent list, but I found the wording or the explanation here curious, at least, in terms of making a long-distance trip. It says to increase recruiting and retention in choir and the performing arts. I take that to mean they want to do a special activity, so the kids that are in the program enjoy it, and other kids see it as an attractive thing to consider joining. You don't join band instantly in high school, usually you build up your skills there, but choir, you can jump into a little quicker, easier, but I, I guess usually you don't make a long-distance trip, a touring group has a tool for retention and recruiting, you do it for the purpose of whatever value the performance itself is going to have, and the experience, so I'm just, I'd like to little further justification, I suppose you could call it, because it's all the way to California, that's going to cost money.
Yes, sir, good questions. Gallup High has had a tradition of big bands that has really dropped off, I'm going to say in the last 10 years, and I'll go back to my days, 120, 130-piece bands were the norm. One of the big things they did every year was they did have a booster club, the booster club did the Rose Bowl Parade, Disneyland, different, different things like that. So, this instructor, instructor is new to Gallup High, she wants to get back to the days, because it's dwindled down to where they have like a 25, 30-piece band. So, she said she wants to, the educational is a retention recruiting tool, she actually went into the music standards, and produced some music standards of what they're doing, and really it's a incentive, if you'll join a band, be in a band all year, the performances, learning the style and stuff like that, that the booster club will send all the students to California, to Disneyland. It doesn't state whether or not they're going to actually do a little performance there or not, I would hope that they would get to, but this will be no charge to the district, it's going to be 100% booster-driven, so start getting ready to buy your band candy, et cetera. I can make you a copy of the standards that the instructor proposed, and that's about all I really know about it.
Oh, she's here.
I'm here, hello.
Oh, that's great. About 30 seconds ago.
Hello, my name is Victoria Nakimi, I'm the band director at Gallup High School and two-yearly Lincoln Middle School, and also the choir director and music appreciation teacher. So, what's on the table is a proposal to take the performing ensembles from my eighth grade through 12th grade band, and my ninth through 12th grade choir, and what I want to do with them is actually outline on this thing, so I can send this around, but this is the performance that we would like to do. We have a couple of different possibilities that we could get, of events that we could get into. These are almost guaranteed, once the, if we get board approval, once the application is filled out, and I send in our addition tapes and everything, this is almost guaranteed. And what it is, is it's a workshop where the kids would go into a recording studio in Disney, and we'd sit down, we'd sight read whatever they put on the stand, and it's pre-graded, so my kids can read currently like a grade two level music, they would put a grade one in front of us, so that we could be successful in like 10 minutes, and sight read the thing, and then they would record us, and it would be a piece of Disney soundtrack. of Disney soundtrack. And what they, and what they're gonna do is they're gonna put it up behind us, and whatever movie it is, and then our audio is going to be on the soundtrack to that little clip of the movie, and they get to take it home, and it's really cute and it's great. And the choir kids get to do the same thing. So, I hate talking about these things. So, what's, what's awesome is that, like, when else do you get to do that? I'm a professional musician, and I have never been able to do that kind of thing. So, when I found out about this opportunity, I was like, man, we gotta go. And it's not going to cost anything to the district itself. It is entirely booster-funded, and student and families of students funded. It's not affiliated really with the school. We'll definitely be doing some fundraising, so, yeah. They're ready by, I have candy for sale now, actually. So, yeah, it's, it's all entirely fundraiser, and it's a really, really, really cool opportunity. And plus, they get to run around in Disneyland, and, you know, that's, that's cool and everything. We plan to do it during the spring break next year, so they're not gonna miss any school. Any questions?
Mr. President?
I can add some.
Would you please be able to do a post-presentation and maybe show us the video of the students' performance?
Oh, absolutely. That sounds really cool.
My question is answered. I'm going along.
You cannot fight over it amongst yourselves.
Mr. President, just, just one thing I'd really like to, to remind on, where you are having trouble with the district, remember if you're using students to raise the funds, it's public money, so that doesn't need to be in your account at the school, not booster. That's something we're just having trouble with. And, and then on this, since you've made it an action item, I give it my little thumbs up. All I have is a little thumbs up.
Mr. President? Because since I, the one that raised the question or pulled it off, I move that we approve this trip as presented.
Motion by Mr. Hideman to, or excuse me, Mr. Hideman, to approve 8B3, vote on this, sorry.
Ms. Manoelito?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Have fun.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Thank you so much. I will definitely follow up. Thank you.
I just said, thanks for coming down.
Joan, when she's doing the voting.
Okay. With that, we do have the one for 8G that's approved, the Donated Monster Building to Native American Church through Red Rock Chapter.
Mr. President? I guess the first question I have in my mind is simply, well, Superintendent mentioned in passing earlier in the meeting about some pressure to get this building removed from school property, I guess, for using a space or whatever, but I, does this building have value? In other words, should we be considering selling it?
Mr. Hideman, I've been trying to get these buildings away for three years, they're an attractive nuisance. We have well over 100 and some of these that we've been trying to give up to nonprofits. This is a group that's come to us, and we are affiliated with the Native American Church. They also do veteran counseling out of it also. This is one of the groups that have come to us, I believe, there are several chapter houses that have asked for them, several other nonprofit groups. None of them have the money to move them yet. This one's already ready, they've already poured their foot roots, they're anticipating, they have it ready to go. These are, these are items that, again, they're costing us more to store than what their value is. If, if a nonprofit group wants to buy them, we have offered to sell them at whatever appraisal value is, they have to pay for the appraisal. But for any nonprofit groups working through a government entity like Red Rock Chapter or the Makima County, we have been donated. And we do have, Mr. Abada did work through the State Precairman Office to, to ensure that we're doing this within the legality and such. If you look, we have five or six that are really dumping on the Crown Point High Campus. We'd love to get rid of those. The Rube Middle School has, I don't know how many sitting back there, Chief Manoelito. These couple happened to be at Jefferson, and they're in the way of the new construction at that point. So, that's why I was worried that if we're gonna put this off to another meeting, that's why I was mentioning, if so, it was just gonna be torn down. And if a group needs it, I'd rather see it given away than torn down. And if it's torn down, we have to pay, pay for it. So, I, I would again on this one, give a thumbs up recommendation.
Okay, with that, is there any more questions on this? Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Mitchell to approve the Donated Monster Building to the Native American Church through Red Rock Chapter, vote on this.
Mr. Hideman?
Yes.
Ms. Manoelito?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Thank you, Board Members. We're now down to eight, which is approval of proposed policy, Gallup High School, the man content standards, this is the discussion item.
With this, Mr. President, I'd like to ask Mr. Verdavia, Assistant Principal from Gallup Mid, and...
Yeah.
So, I, I would like to turn it over to, to Mr. Vaya and Dr. White to do the presentation on this. Dr. White's gonna be saying run here.
Good afternoon, good evening, Board Members, Superintendent Hedy, Associate Superintendent and the community members from here in Rayma. Thank you for holding us here. We had a meeting, or I should say several meetings regarding the Native Language Curriculum Program, and in that discussing how can we better do that? Because again, like was mentioned earlier, we are a district with many Native American students from many different tribes, and in the United States even, we are not doing what we should be doing with our populations. So, when we have our JON funds, we have our Title VII funds, we have our other funding initiatives, you know, instead of just doing it on little things like supplies, whatnot, why not make a big impact for our native students, to get them to be improving and whatnot? And that comes to hit the curriculum. Touching on to that, how do we make it live in our school district? Because this curriculum is not addressing our needs, and we can see that by what's happening within our community. We have, you know, the hybrids that you talked about earlier, you see it with industries, and that's just because we're not addressing what we should be addressing in, in, in education. Our education system is teaching, and any type of education system that, that you have, you're teaching a belief system. And that belief system that you teach is teaching us one thing right now, which sometimes conflicts with our native teachings. And what we need to do is align both together to, to have a proper system, so our, our students can have that proper thinking where they're not conflicted. Once that conflict within the students is addressed, and they can have, they, they will come out with better self-esteem, better direction in life and everything, and then we can refocus that. So, that's kind of the, the underlying, I guess you'd say, policy or the top that we have within this committee. The committee's recommendation, and I can have Paulette correct me if I'm wrong, is to, is to get the, the, what'd you say, the, I'm picking, I lost the name, the, the, the Native Language ICs or whatever they're called, whatever, is to have them trained, because when we're looking, yeah, yeah, when we're looking at that, we do have to hit various parts of our curriculum. We have to hit assessment, we have to hit the training of teachers, professional development, how to get them, especially if we're bringing teachers in from other parts of the United States. When they come in, they need to be aware of how we operate here to, to better teach our students, okay? Because we are different. I, I really felt with the lady that spoke earlier about us doing dropouts with kids, and they're just dropping out. As an assistant principal, I deal right with that, and it cuts me at the core because I see our students continually doing that, and we don't really have a program that can really address that need to get them to, to be successful. And that really needs to be addressed, and I think this, you know, this project here is, is designed to do that. We really need to get into their, look at what we're doing, see how we're doing it, put that together, and address our native students. Again, we have the largest population that I hear, Rayma, at about 80%, some are Zuni as well. I come from Gallup Mid's probably the lowest, we got about 60%, that's still majority, so... Paulette, is there any?
Thank you, Board Members, and thank you, Mr. Vaya, for explaining overall what, what this proposed policy is. And thank you to Mr. Hideman for bringing that in light to the district. What you have before you is a proposed policy that was worked on with Mr. Vaya, myself, and other members of the team. I also wanted to acknowledge Ms. Maggie Benali, she's in the audience. Her and Dr. Ancia Benali worked with us to draft this proposed policy, so that it is in line with our MOA that we currently have with Navajo Nation. And also, Mr. Dinet Deal was part of it, he's the Indian Education Representative from PE. So, it was a collaborative effort from, from various entities to come up with this. So, our goal is to establish a policy, and so that will guide what we do in all of our schools. So, that, that's, that's what we have here, and we look, and we're basing a lot of what we said on the Donated Content Standards, and that is being driven from Navajo Nation. So, that, that's the core of what we're doing and implementation, and how we're gonna be implementing that, and providing opportunities, just like what Mr. Vaya said, for all of our kids, not just our Navajo kids, but all of our kids since we live in a multicultural society. Thank you.
Mr. President?
May I be told?
Acheha, I think is a word that I wanna use. I know a lot of our families are district-wide. I don't know if I'll say it right. Yachetan zindoleh. I think this is something that we've been advocating for. As a parent, I wanted to continue to advocate for that, and that's one of the reasons, one of the few reasons I ran for the board, too. This is something that I know we need to continue to encourage. Nkashin, aunt Nejia dashtio. You don't know how much that comforts grandparents, a parent's heart. And I think when, if you guys attended the Navajo Language Culture Festival, I think one day that gym was completely full, where we had parents and grandparents standing on the sides, viewing and watching and admiring their students performing, and I think that's one thing that, that's awesome that we need to continue for them. So, acheha, nke dechni sto, ay zigei wonka. N'geno ta doshi sto, bain dasnasho, acheha, ntskazoo. Thank you very much for that, and I just, thank you, Mr. Hideman, I know this is something that you continue to hound the board about and administration, and, you know, it's getting, it's getting there, we're taking one step forward, so acheha.
May I be told?
Thank you, Ms. Manoelito. Mr. Hideman?
Thank you. When the young poet, Tanaya Winder, was speaking to the students at Central High, she said something about not seeing one's identity reflected in school. I wrote down part of the quote, but I don't have it. One of the reasons for this whole consideration is for kids to see their own identity reflected in the school subjects. Some of us have an identity that was built into the curriculum. Vern and I both have music backgrounds, Western classical music, and when I went to school and they talked about the three Bs, Beethoven and Bach and Brahms or whichever, those, those are German guys, and I'm German extraction. Nobody had to make a point about it, it was just kinda, you know, fit with your identity. There was no conflict, there was no cognitive dissonance, there aren't ways we can describe that. And we know that historically, schools have tried to get kids moved effectively into English and into being able to be mobile in the world, and it simply has not worked that well. And there are different factors for that. Plus, in the meantime, Navajo language has diminished, the skill has diminished, Navajo cultural knowledge has diminished. And so, first of all, to me, this is about perception of students of themselves and others. And what I'm leading to, I want, with this statement, I want to propose one slight edit and amendment, and that is, if you look at the statement we have in our packet, and there's four, where as, where as, separate where as paragraphs, and one says, "Whereas numerous studies of Indian education have recommended, quote, 'The teaching and inclusion of Navajo and Indian studies in schools, both in support of students, families, and tribal communities, identities, and heritages, and so on.'" That phrase, Navajo and Indian studies, I would like to include also in the therefore statement, number one, where it says, "Integrate Donated Content Standards." I would like to add in there, "and" and Navajo and Indian studies, in every subject and grid level as appropriate. And the reason for that is, I believe that, that Indian students, no matter what our label, if we're Donet and we're not something else, or we're Zuni and we're not Donet, we're affected, we're impacted by the historical perception and label from the outside that we're Indian. And so, that's part of what we deal with, even though in more concrete and meaningful terms, we may be Donet, la kota, or whatever. So, that affects us. And so, to make that linkage, I think we need to be open to Navajo and Indian studies together, because also in the history, the history is linked. When it comes to relationship with federal government, for something like relocation, for example, it was done, Navajo people, you know, went to San Francisco, or LA, or Denver, whatever, but that was true with tribes generally, there are those kinds of policies that affected not just Indian history in a double way. And then there's the intertribal history. I mean, even something close to home here, if you look at Zuni and Puilu Kachina dance things, and you look at Navajo Yegiche, there's, there's a connection. They, that's not coincidence that they have so many things that are alike, and I won't argue about who had it first and how it got from here to there, but there, there's been a, a link and a borrowing and a learning, and even when, when Zuni people became Navajo people through, you know, Nish Teshu plans, like Nish Teshu Tapaha, or Nish Teshu Tachene, there's a Zuni link for people in ancestry. And so, Navajos are not in isolation in their history, they're affected by, and they're tied to broader things and vice versa. And then the personalities to learn about within that Indian history. We have famous Navajo people, going way back, Narbona, and Ganado Lucho, and, and so on, and, and contemporary personalities that kids should know, the impact of Peterson's Ah, and, and more contemporary leaders in, in different spheres, but at the same time, earlier this evening downstairs, somebody mentioned Billy Mills. Well, Billy Mills, Mills was not Navajo, but he certainly was a hero that made a lot of people take notice, Jim Thorpe, famous athletes, and who's, who's the baseball player, professional baseball player? Ken, is there?
Kobe Alver.
Huh?
Dr. Kobe Alver.
Yeah, he's been up, talked to Navajo Nation Council, I believe, a couple years ago. So, so to keep that open to all of the things that can contribute to, to Navajo and other native kids, identity and motivation and connections with school, and then also for the non-Indian students, we all benefit from learning about each other and about the richness of the heritages that are around us in our territory as, as well as nationally. So, then the last comment is, I know there are some people who are not for this. There are some Navajo people who still have the idea, and it's always been there for a long time, and a lot of those were boarding school products, to say this idea, well, and and Navajos too, say, well, Navajo should be learned at home. But we don't say that to the English families, we don't say, well, English should be learned at home. No, we reinforce it and we add to it in school. So, the same idea... So the same idea with any home language, if the school can reinforce that, so people, because it's not beyond the average of a person's ability to be bilingual. It's within the normal person's brain power, if you might put it that way. Why not know two languages? Or three? And much of the world has been bilingual. Not necessarily biliterate, but bilingual. Africa with all the colonialism there, and you have lingua franca, you have French, as well as English in different parts of Africa, where people grew up learning two languages. And so, so those parents, and I had a mother come up after aborting once when we first talked about Navajo language revitalization. She's Hispanic background, Mexican and Latino. And she said, "I don't want my kids to learn Spanish in school. I want them to learn English so they can, you know, go out in the world." Well, I respect the motive for that, because they want to make sure their kids know the dominant language so they can survive and, you know, do well in careers and so on. But I'm convinced that by weakening the home language and the connection with parents, and so on historically for decades, we have weakened the persons and we have weakened the educational motivation and performance of students. So the benefit of doing this, to me, first of all, is for the individual student in that language and culture and heritage connection. But it's also for them in terms of performing more strongly in the dominant school system, by having that system connect with them better. And so, I know I'm going on, I want to get going on this particular thing. But, and I think that, we just had, you know, recent research going out of California with Spanish, where they did an immersion thing with kids in the schools, and they found that not only the kids of Spanish background increased their performance on test scores, but non-Spanish kids improved their performance. And one of the explanations for that is that when the Spanish kids started really taking off, it raised the level of thought and, you know, activity in the classroom for everybody. So even the non-Navajo students started, you know, it was just a more dynamic, a stronger learning environment. And I think that's going to be true, I trust, for those of us who've come from various, we've got so many great, interesting backgrounds in our territory. You know, and this school, when I was instructional coach, I think there were teachers, there were at least seven languages known by the faculty in this school. It was not only Navajo and Spanish, and I don't know if we had any other, any staff. We had Zuni, yeah, a lady from Zuni, she was in, I'm thinking that up now. But we had, it was Russian, Japanese, some of you who are here could name them. I think there were seven languages known by the teachers here. I used to think, this ought to become a language magnet school. Man, this is a school, it's seven languages, it was, it was special. So if we can do that and find that there are more perspectives and more ways of thinking, you know, by tying into different cultures and so on, I think we'll all be richer for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hideman. I do favor this policy. Sorry, Dr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Nez. Mr. Hideman, you mentioned adding a number one to what's listed there, something about adding Indian studies in every grade level as appropriate.
Just, I would say, integrate the net content standards and Navajo and Indian studies. And that reflects the whereas.
We had discussed that, and we said that's on number five. The first half of number five says, "Provide opportunities in each subject at every grade level for students to research, explore, or otherwise learn about elements and connections within each subject area that relates to Navajo and Indian cultures, identities, and/or contemporary life and affairs." When we had the discussion about the sentence, we mentioned not only traditional knowledge, but contemporary knowledge applicable from case two twelve. And then the very next sentence, it says, "In all grade levels, students will have opportunities to learn about the net knowledge and its integration into the general curriculum." So number five is a more global, as far as Native American studies. And then the second sentence talks specifically about the net language.
Thank you, and I apologize, I had forgotten about that. And when I saw that first sentence, my mind went back to thinking that it wanted to be just the net and a narrow sentence. So I accept your, thank you for pointing that out, and I accept that as sufficient.
Thank you again for that clarification. One of the things that I find that are kind of different is that if this policy is related to the MOA that we're going to approve this even, Navajo Nation, it does state on the policy, it's the net content standards. I do favor teaching our children the language. However, I do, I always see that the traditional aspect, the knowledge part stays with the home. A lot of the children today refuse to attend a lot of these ceremonies. Languages is forgotten. I know, because I'm always out at ceremonies, and the younger children are out playing, running around. But the older children are either out in the city doing something, or doing their own thing. But I think what we do from our level as a district is that we should sort of, I lost that word, encourage them about their traditional aspect in their homes. I always stress to parents, even when I go out, teach your children the language. Even tonight, those out listening to webcasts, talking to you as well, as Navajo parents, teach your children, you know, it's just not the school that we should be teaching this. Do it at home, too. A lot of the time, children are embarrassed to speak your language at home. That's what I caught my mother and children, my brothers and sisters, should I say. When I visited them, they always have, they're always shy to speak your language. And I tell them, "What do you learn in school?" "Well, we're just learning our introduction and our clans." So I took the initiative from that time, which is about three or four years ago, to really teach them the, what I had been taught by my elders. So it's really coming to a point where I think they will one day be practitioners themselves. So a lot of it has to come from the home, from the home level. Home has ado, the other is see how okay, from that point. So that's just something I wanted to just put out, but I really favor this policy. I hope it bothers more, I see the pacing guides pretty, pretty good. So I want to thank Dr. White, as well as Mr. Baye, Ms. Benali as well. She's actually my teacher, too, at Sounds Intermediate. So a lot of, so I, it's really interesting to see a lot of our teachers here, so thank you for that. So acheha, thank you.
Question? Yes, thank you. So at this time, or in this coming school year, will each teacher have a copy of the content standards?
Yes, they will. So once, this is the first reading. So once it's formally adopted, we're going to put that as probably the first page within the content standards itself, along with the MOA. So it'll be more comprehensive booklet that they will see.
And can I further that, one more step, to also put it on the website for our parents to view that are able to, that have internet, please?
Yes, Ms. Manalito, we, we need to, excuse me. Yes, Ms. Manalito, we'll go ahead and do that, thank you.
May I ask for a clarification, please? Are you asking about the content standards or the policy that we?
The content standard for the teachers.
We'll buy those for the teachers. Because the Division of Education doesn't have money to, they tell me to distribute these. They don't even have copies for sale, they don't have copies in their office. So somewhere I have to work with them to get them.
We have a picture.
May I add one more comment? For teachers who might be concerned about this in terms of, they're not Navajo, and sometimes even if they are, and they don't know how some of these things are going to, what they can use in their subject area. I think my expectation is there, simply we all work together to identify and build a repertoire of a battery of lessons that will fit in the different subject areas. In some areas, it's easy, and some areas, it's not so easy. And so I don't expect a teacher to be an expert immediately on what kind of Navajo and Indian studies or things relate to their subject area. But I expect them to be learners as well as teachers in this, and then we can share it with each other, so people in the same subject area discover something about, hey, what can I do? Comes up with an idea in chemistry, and finds a way to connect that. Hopefully, that can be shared and not guarded.
Mr. President, I have one more comment, too. I talked with this, with Dr. White and Mr. Chupetti, that during the Navajo Language Culture Festival, I talked with some of the language culture teachers. And, you know, this is one thing that, you know, we, I was really encouraging the district, and also, they also very thankfully agreed also that our culture teachers should get together and have a professional development, at least quarterly, to see what they're doing within their school. And one of the other things that one of the teachers brought up was, you know, how they can help the non-native teachers implement the net content standards within their schools, and share those ideas themselves, too, to where it would be more, you know, they can gain ideas and pass them along within, with each other's group. So I thought that would be really good for them to do, and I'm very thankful Dr. White and Mr. Chupetti also agreed that they could form that partnership together at least four times a year through the school year. So thank you very much for that.
I believe it will be on the next agenda for approval as an action item. But thank you for your expression, thank you, Mr. Baye.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. White and Ms. Benali, being here, Superintendent Baye. Our next item, the agenda, is action item. It's going to be under eight I, which is approval to hire and pay the outstanding bill of fifteen thousand, six thirty, and sixty-three cents to Cudi Law for recall representation for Titus Ness and Priscilla Manito. This is an action item again, it's listed on the board packet with the information per request.
Mr. President? I was going to say, the main thing I'd like to just point you to is number five. On that first page. What they told us is it needs to be ratified. That those five items are what the New Mexico Attorney General put in his opinion in 2007 on this. They have to answer the five questions. I, it's your decision on the first four, on that first page. But number five, the decision to pay the fees must be made by impartial official or official body. So that's why we're bringing it to vote today, so we can get it paid.
Mr. Hideman? I believe that when this law firm submits bills to us normally, they itemize that in terms of the number of hours involved. Attorneys normally do that, some of them do it down to the minute. I believe this bill is proper in terms of its legality and so on, but I don't find it the bill proper. There's no date on it in terms of when the service was rendered, there are no time. And I'm in favor of simply tabling this the next meeting and getting that information, and then I'm in favor of approving it. But I just simply, this is not a complete bill to me.
Mr. Hideman, I can attest that the original bill did do a breakdown of each phone call, research, hearing, travel. It did break it down. This was a bill that came in four eleven, that was signed. So I'd have to go back to the original to provide that. But I can attest that the breakdown from Cudi Law is there, and I can provide that to you. President Nez is also seeming.
I believe what you say, but I don't think that's good business practice. To me, to go on word of mouth, I just don't find it a proper billing. And I think, then I can't look and say, well, yes, it's in accord with this normal hourly rate. And so I just, I believe you can show that to us. I just think they should have shown it to us, and it should have been in here. I just don't like proving that kind of figure without having the specifics. Thank you.
When we got the first copy of the bill, I do remember seeing it itemized detailed. But at that time, I didn't have questions myself. So it was sent back to Cudi Law, and the same information came back. And that's where we got that legal interpretation, as requested for a public body to approve it. I do believe, I had a copy that I have scanned, but I fortunately didn't bring it. You'll speed with me, so.
Where did the bill originally go to? Did that go to you, Javanna, or do you have, or just to Titus?
It was given to.
It was given to Mr. Nez.
So where does the itemized sheet, where is that now?
I know that Cudi Law, they're very professional. I know they would not submit a bill like this unless, I mean, there would have to be a breakdown somewhere.
I believe what really had happened was that, at the time, we had the original bill given to us. There was investigation going on. So we had, at the time, when I received the bill, it was on our interim superintendent. I received the bill, I got the copy. That's when I sent it back to Cudi Law. When they got back on, gave it back to me, I think it was in January, with Mr. Chupetti, I got the copy again. And at that time, I was waiting for legal interpretation. And I think this one, the one we got, was, I didn't get it from, I think it was Andy, who had showed me the copy, and I said, "I will go ahead and present this." So I do have the original, one of the original ones. Just let me bring it to you.
Mr. President? That's what I wanted to see, and it does have the breakdown for the hours and the dates. Amazing.
I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we pay this bill. This bill has been outstanding. The whole legal process took place with questioning what was done by the board members while they were board members, and how they were conducted, conducting themselves or conducting meetings as well. You know, so I honestly feel that, you know, this is under, you know, clearly should be stated as, you know, it was board business. So I would like to make a motion that we pay the bill.
Motion by Mr. Mitchell to approve the hiring and pay outstanding bill of fifteen thousand, six thirty, and sixty-three cents to Cudi Law for recall representation for Titus Ness and Priscilla Manito.
Did you recommend these terms to?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I did not make a formal motion, I was indicating my direction of my thinking, thank you.
So the original motions to approve by Mr. Mitchell, roll call.
Mr. Hideman?
Yes?
Ms. Manalito?
We did, we did ask the interpretation, we did ask the interpretation, and they said, it is not, it is not a conflict of interest, because the, whatever law it is that says on conflict of interest, for the body the, whatever law it is that says on conflict of interest for the body to voting if you were making material gain as in for the business that was hiring in the school system. So they did tell us you are a law developer.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Mr. Nez?
Yes. Thank you for that. Let's continue on now to our next action item. This is HA, approval to reaffirm the memorandum of agreement between Galloa County School and Navajo Nation dated April sixth, 2015. It's an action item.
Mr. President? During the committee meetings, there were three meetings held of the committee that were working on cultural curriculum proposal and language. And the first meeting was two hours, the next one was two hours, and the next one was three and a half hours. So they went through a lot of very interesting worthwhile discussion. And in the third meeting, I think in the second half meeting anyway, came to our awareness, so one of the members, Roland, had provided the committee members with copies of the net content standards. But I was not aware of the MOA that the board had entered into about a year ago or so. And the reason I wanted to present it, to reaffirm it, even though it's actually still in place, is because one of the issues we've talked about with Navajo, supporting Navajo languages, that some of the schools are not teaching Navajo language at all the grade levels. And in this MOA that the board had approved before, it says that the district shall make available instruction in the net language at all grade levels using appropriate instructional strategies. Well, we're doing it at all grade levels, but not in all schools. So I just, I wanted to reaffirm that MOA so that we can know where we're at in regard to teaching, particularly teaching Navajo language as part of the MOA, at all grade levels. And there are things in here that we're doing, but there are things to me that have not yet been fully accomplished on the district side and also on Navajo Nation and the Department of Dine Education, or DODI, as some people refer to it. There's some obligations that they have promised to do some support. And I don't believe they've fulfilled that altogether either. So I think if we can sort of kick this into gear more fully on both sides, we can have some mutual understanding of going ahead with this. So again, this was already approved by the board back a year ago. But because we're not doing all of it, I thought we ought to say that we want to do all of it and start doing it.
Question, Mr. Nez?
Ms. Manito?
Who's the presenter? Dr. White? So is this the same as last year? There's no changes, nothing have been, nothing have been made with it?
There are no changes. This is the same one that you have approved last year.
Okay, okay. That's my question.
So I think in reality, this is actually an approved MOA already in place, but Mr. Hyneman had requested that both sides of the parties concur with whatever is stated in here. That some of the, some of the things listed here have not been implemented since its approval. So I guess it's just a reaffirming that the MOA in it. So I believe that's really what it is in reality, board members.
Thank you, Mr. Nez. Mr. White, Mrs. White, I'm sorry. This one that says, resolution of Navajo Nation Board of Education, what, how is she, how is she telling?
Resolution that's in your packet was the resolution that was proposed to the Navajo Board of Education in Windoroc. When they reviewed this before it was signed, they had a draft, they had this one as part of their presentation. So when we presented to the Department of Dine Education School Board Association in Windoroc, they put their resolution saying it's okay for Dr. Lewis and everybody to sign off on this. That one was just the resolution that you have in your packet. But the final one is, that's already signed by Mr. Chappetti, Mr. Manini, Mr. Shelley, and Dr. Lewis.
So who in, who is it, you called it that works with this to ensure that the steps are taking place so that we're meeting the agreement with the Navajo Nation?
Yes, we are. We're in various stages of implementation. We're not totally there yet at full implementation, but we're moving in distant guides. But the work that we do can also, it also helps guide Windoroc when we work with them to see how well, what else can we do to help keep the ball rolling.
Another question, Mr. Nez. Dr. White, with this one, of course, I think this is really important, what the MOA says that goes out to the principals. And will they also receive a copy of this? And I think it's even important for, because if we need any assistance from DODI, that, you know, they're, with them signing this, Dr. Lewis signing it, you know, I think, like what you said, you know, we're both not really implementing different things. But, you know, I think they have the resource to look up who needs to do what and what they need to do as principals and teachers and culture teachers, I guess. So will this be given to all the parties also?
Ms. Manito, thank you for your question. Back and forth, this MOA, a copy of the MOA was given to all the principals. And then this year with, with the next board meeting, if the proposed policy is accepted and voted on, then we're going to put that one along with this one and give them, put that into the Dine Content Standards booklet. So it will be shared again with the NLC coaches, the teachers, school principals. It'll be available on the website for downloading if they need to.
Dr. White, on this MOU here, what is, what percentage can you say that we're at as far as fulfilling this agreement? And have we made attempts to reach out to DODI for any of their training or advice or, you know, their help?
Are you asking what, from our end, where we're at?
Yeah.
As far as GCS will leave these things?
Yeah, because you mentioned that you're working on it and not all has been implemented, but you're working to fulfill it. What percent are we at as far as fulfillment?
Starting on page four, it lists from letter F, Galloa County School will perform the following duties. And it goes through one through eighteen. You want me to go through all the, one through eighteen and tell you where we're at? Is that what you're asking or just in general?
Just in general.
In general, we are implementing a lot of what we said we're going to be doing. The things that we have not done yet is to develop the evaluation instrument for the five twenties. That's on item number sixteen. But we attempted to start that, but we're going to be going back to the drawing board on that. So we will have probably an evaluation instrument by next year or before that so that the current teachers will know how they're going to be evaluated next year. And Navajo Nation does help us when we ask them, you know, we need your feedback. We need, we need help on this part. They're more than willingly doing that for us. We've also collaborated on the bilingual seal requirements because that's from the tribe. So the tribe did make the instrument. We did go through the bilingual seal presentations from the kids. And some of our kids did get that, will have that on their diplomas and on their transcripts. So I would say out of the eighteen, except for number sixteen on the five twenties, we have, we are implementing that. And of course, we can, we can do a lot stronger and more in-depth, rigorous implementation of all of them.
Thank you.
Ms. Manito?
Mr. Hyatt, this question for you. So with that evaluation tool, will that help us with that grant that we wanted to do for, no, yes?
It will not help us because they're still not evaluated with the state system.
Is there a way we can correlate it with the state system?
We would like to. There are, we'll have to jump through to make that happen. Not just our end, but their end because of the testing requirements, how that information relates to scores.
Good evening, board members. Just a clarification on the evaluation instrument. We work pretty close with Galloa County. I am responsible for the evaluation part. From our end, to certify, recertify the teachers. So what we're doing now is looking at our evaluation system, the testing. So we are in the process of revising it so that it will, before it was basically just cultural knowledge and just oral, you know, oral testing. So if, you know, if an applicant has a knowledge, cultural knowledge, and they have their AA degree, they will qualify. But now, since we have the MOA, we have the, you know, all the language policies where we want students to learn the language, we are revising this so that teachers will be more competent in teaching the language rather than just, you know, just the cultural knowledge. So that's what we're doing now. But we'll probably be, we won't be ready this coming school year, but the following school year. And then talking about the policies and the MOA, we have a strategic plan that really is written so that it's a step-by-step process so that's aligned with the MOA. We were working on that, but we had to stop because we wanted to really look at the MOA again, make sure that we were doing what we said we're going to be doing from both Navajo Nation and from Galloa County. So we're still working together on a lot of things. Another thing was that a clearinghouse, from our end, we said we'll develop a clearinghouse. But Navajo Nation, you know, is an institution. You have to, you know, work your way up to get things approved. So it's hard to do. So we take twenty years, I don't know. So just for your information, that we work with Galloa County, you know, in terms of teacher evaluation, teacher recertification, and other, other areas as far as professional development to make sure that teachers are being trained, be effective in the classrooms. So this one I wanted to share with you. Thank you.
Mr. Hyneman? The, some of the contents of this, when this came up in the committee meeting, because I wasn't around last year, I don't know, I didn't know how much the board had really studied this or how much you're aware of the contents and so on. There's some heavy stuff in here. I want to point out, there's two things. On item number seven, on the district's part, or number, yes, it mentions cultural competency. Written curriculum based on the net content standards infused with common core state standards, which promotes and fosters cultural competency and competency in all societies. That's a big order, you know. But that's what we're after, I think, is cultural competency for all of us. In whatever society and whatever setting we're operating in, and, you know, people are bilingual, but they're also bicultural. People shift gears in terms of certain kinds of mannerisms and etiquette and so on. Those of us who live in two worlds experience that at times. So just want to point that out, but that's not something that's just quick and easy to work out. But it's there as a goal. And number eight mentions that the district shall provide current indigenous research-based instructional strategies. Well, that is also in the Navajo Nation's part where it says on there, number six, that they'll establish this clearinghouse that Espinola just mentioned for effective indigenous instructional strategies. So the district should be getting help from Navajo Nation on what that means. But in the meantime, I don't think we can wait on Navajo Nation for all those things. That's where I think we really need to build up a strong Indian education department, in a sense, where we have that expertise to provide as support for our teachers and staff. Because, you know, you can have somebody who's really good at their field, their subject, kinds of things. But when it comes to the research and culturally-based, culturally-responsive instruction and so on, we need help with that. We need somebody who's really been able to spend time with that and dig into it and so on, see how it applies in our setting. So I think this is a tall order, but I think it'll lead to a much stronger instructional system along with other things we're doing, so.
Mr. President, I just wanted to mention too that I think we have, I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel where I think there's, I mean, we heard, when we attend a lot of Indian education conferences in the past, there's other school districts and other schools that have implemented these things that I think they can share with us or we can learn from them or even other tribes. Because I even heard one conference I was attending in Albuquerque that Zuni has an awesome program with their, with their language and culture. I mean, I think we just need to kind of go around and ask to see. And I know a lot of Arizona schools are also doing these kind of things for their, for their school districts. And I think we, I don't think we really need to invent anything. I think we just need to go out and research and find these other school districts. But going back to my question with Mike, what do you think we need to do, sir, to get the ball rolling on this? Sometimes it takes the initiative to light that fire under people to, because I really think that that grant that was proposed at the bilingual session I attended is something that, I mean, it was five thousand dollars for recruitment, five thousand dollars for, or seven thousand for bonuses. I mean, that's something that would really encourage our language and culture teachers to stay or to apply. And how can we get that, sir?
We're going to need some advocacy on the state side in getting that done because they're the ones really that are stuck. We can only go so far. They're going to have to be as, we're willing to do the work on our end to meet whatever expectations they require. Right now, they don't have an advocate for us to have our Navajo language and culture teachers that are not bilingual certified and qualified.
To add to that, we tried getting our Navajo language and culture teachers under the New Mexico Teach. Matt Montano, I don't know what their title is, Director of Education Qualifications or whatever quality, said no, couldn't, because the PED didn't want to have anything to do with their evaluation because they didn't want to threaten the sovereignty of Navajo Nation because they're the ones who license the five twenty teachers. So they're licensed, they're licensed by the Navajo Nation. But again, we're dealing with the PED incentive and licensure. We're very lucky to have Terry Fraser now on the advisory board. So she is going to be bringing forth for us. And Dr. White's information is all in. We're hoping the governor signs off on her. And then we'll have two voices on the advisory board. And we'll have a voice within the PED. And anytime we ask support from DODI and the Navajo Nation, they've provided that support. So we're going to be reaching out with support from the Navajo Nation to the Public Education Department to say, even though the licensure is through the Navajo Nation, we still want the same high standards and accountability that the New Mexico Teach is bringing. That's where Dr. White started doing the, reworking the rubric with her team of Navajo language and culture support coaches. So we have a good basis to go forward. We can show that we're meeting the licensure requirements from the Navajo Nation, the high rigor for the New Mexico PED. And then we'll be asking the state through the Native American Division to supply an incentive like they're doing for STEM. So we're hoping it's a year out, it's going to be along the lobby with the P E D. But I think it's very doable. They've been very open to what we're doing. And we can show that it is a hard position to fill also. We have a shortage of these teachers. So just like STEM, we have a shortage and they're giving the incentives. But we have a shortage here that we need to provide also. But it'll probably be coming from a different department at the P E D. And just like you said, the Navajo Nation is an institution you have to work through. Believe me, the state of New Mexico, we're, it's bigger and we're rolling through there.
I was just going to take this here, maybe put her on the spot and see if she had any suggestions or what, as lobbyists, and what we might be able to do in this case.
Mr. President, members of the board, good evening. It's a pleasure to see you all. This associate superintendent is in guest.
Just a second. By the way, happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Chappetti. We have celebrated your birthday during this session. So it's again, it's a pleasure to see you all. I think having a work session and including this topic would be a great place to start.
Thank you, board.
Mr. President. I move that we, where is the right page? I move that we approve, that we reaffirm the memorandum of agreement as previously enacted. And it's presented in our materials. I guess that's, I was going to say, matter of reaffirming at this point. I move that we reaffirm our M O A with Navajo Nation, as given, signed April 6, 2015.
Motion by Mr. Hineman to reaffirm the memorandum of agreement between Galapagos County School and Navajo Nation dated April 6, 2015. Roll call please.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes. Thank you, board, on that. That concludes our action items. We're now going to entertain a motion.
Before you go to the executive session, can I ask the dates for the work session, the legislative work session?
Legislative work session date? Please give me a date. May 31st?
Mr. President. I'm sure that is, that is a common schedule.
I do have a, I have a meeting. I think it's very important that the Native Americans, the Native American advocacy group, at two, let's say about two o'clock. So we'll work on that. We appreciate it.
Mr. President, board members, I'm sure this won't take more than a few hours.
It's the same week as the law, are we all, I think the law calls it that we do.
We're just going to advertise that we're going to have a meeting at one, or action will be taken.
A work session, would that, are you guys going to be at the law club?
If the board would like, we're speaking.
I remember one time we did it on a Thursday before everything started, that Thursday evening. Once, you know, we had a meeting in the evening. And it, while work session, while the work session, we had a session, was like about five, five o'clock on that Thursday. It's not Halloween. Yeah, but anyway, if we want to suggest that, maybe we can have the work session on that Thursday evening prior to the board, prior to the law starting.
Is, is, are we still there?
No.
Because in scale of that work session on Thursday, it's, it was locked off. So I need to reschedule the date of the work session.
Yeah.
I would, so second, third, fourth, so it's available. Tuesday evening, I mean Thursday evening, the second evening?
I have a question. That all conferences at Hotel Albuquerque, however, we are all the same at the conference. That's where we need reservations, because we can get the, we can get our conference room there.
Okay. The second evening, say six o'clock?
June 2nd?
Six p.m.?
Six p.m.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's continue on. We do have an executive session. The board will be meeting on limited personal matters to discuss the superintendents evaluation of section ten dash fifty dash one, H two of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Manuelito, roll call please.
Mr. Hineman? Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Seven thirty-four.